Thank you so much. Please join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate that, then. Madam Clerk, can I get a roll call?
Of course. Bob Lucy, Chair.
Here.
Vaughn Hartung, Vice Chair.
Here.
Alexis Hill.
Here.
Kitty Jung over the phone.
Present.
Jeanne Herman.
Here.
Dave Solero, Assistant County Manager.
Here.
David Watzpiel over Zoom.
Here.
Deputy District, Assistant District Attorney, I'm sorry. And I'm Jan Galassini, your county clerk. So you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I do appreciate it. All right. With that, Mr. Manager, can you take us into item three, sir?
Sure. Mr. Chair, item number three is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made in the commission as a whole.
All right. Madam Clerk, will you please call public comment?
Mr. Paul White is here in chambers, followed by Mr. Roger Edwards.
Good morning, Mr. White.
Good morning. Thirty days ago, I offered all of you an invitation to try something new that could end homelessness in our county and at no cost. I told you that decades of firsthand helping the chronically homeless get off the street had proven to me that the problem is misdiagnosed. There is no lack of affordable housing, jobs, food, mental health services, or drug treatment. Any vagrant who is simply willing to work, get clean and sober, and take outpatient mental health help if necessary can be housed and employed within 72 hours, and I offered to do that. Most recently, I've proven this to be true for the past several years in Reno. I invited the commissioners during the past 30-day period to send me as many homeless individuals as you could find who were willing to meet those three simple criteria, and I would show to you, prove to you, that our county can help both ourselves and the people on the street without wasting millions of dollars on needless facilities that have done nothing but let our homeless problem get worse. A side effect of this failed approach has been a continued spike in our crime and the increasing deterioration of downtown. After I spoke to you 30 days ago, I emailed each of you this information and explained in greater detail how you could personally refer to me, any homeless individual, and I would report the results back to you today. My purpose in offering this was to show the commissioners a better and a proven way to solve this problem and benefit everyone. So 30 days later, here's the results. Not one of you responded to my invitation. Not one of you referred to single homeless individual. Not one of you even contacted me to ask about how this approach works. I'll share how it works. The most recent three homeless people I've worked with, one woman and two men, all had housing and employment within 72 hours. The most recent man has gone on to rent his own apartment, get a promotion at his job, buy a truck, become a pillar of his church, establish a savings account, get his commercial truck license, and now helps other vagrants get off the street. Could any of you give me even one reason why you would not contact me about trying this approach? It would cost nothing. It works. What you're currently doing does not. You owe it to the people who elected you. To not let arrogance or indifference to this issue prevent you from, at the least, sit down with me for a few minutes and hear more about how we could solve this problem.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Mr. Roger Edwards, followed by Ms. Darla Lee.
Welcome, Mr. Edwards.
Good morning. For the record, Roger Edwards, a 48-year resident of this area. I've been there, done that mostly. My compatriot, Paul White,'s got a really good program going, and I wish you guys get together with him and listen to what he's got going on. Unfortunately, that's not what I'm here to talk about. We have, really have a voter, and that's not a voter fraud item, it's more of a election fraud problem in our area. State, of course, but it comes down to the county also. When the county registrar gets presented with dead people that are voted, that are on her own rolls and that she has not removed, that makes it local, that makes it us, that makes it you guys, and we need to do something about it. You know, the state party, State Republican Party, for those who don't know, I'm pretty much embedded, the State Republican Party submitted Thursday last 222,000 signed complaints to the state registrar voters over this last election. Individual, 222,300 plus, individual complaints about fraud in this last election. Now that, how much farther out does that have to get before it gets everybody's attention? I mean, if there's nothing more important than having legitimate elections, you know, I'm a 37-year, I'm a 37-year military veteran. I spent all of my adult working life that I wasn't here in these chambers defending this country, just to see it, you know, subjugated by fraudulent elections. Come on, folks, do what you can, please. Get behind forensic investigation of the election. Do what you can, please.
Excuse me, excuse me. This is, this is not, this is not for, this is a business meeting, please, for people that are trying to speak. Thank you.
Ms. Darla Lee.
Welcome, Ms. Lee.
Darla Lee, for the record, good morning. First of all, we'd like to echo what Mr. Edwards just said as being absolutely vital for you folks to take some action in that regard. And as far as what I had on my mind this morning was basically our First Amendment rights, and that means that the public, at least one portion of that, is that we have freedom of speech. Thank God we still have a remnant of that in this nation, and I'm thankful that we can come in person here to the chambers. Unfortunately, we have to pass through a metal detector, of which I've mentioned before, I have a hip replacement, so I am subjugated to a pat-down, which in my mind, for a law-abiding citizen who is coming here to simply voice a concern, is humiliating. However, the, at the state level, the public, who should have freedom of speech, is obligated to only do it by phone since the legislature is closed to the public. The people's house is closed to the people. So the resolution that Commissioner Herman had put forth before is still not on the agenda about opening Nevada, and as far as Second Amendment, Commissioner Herman's trying to put on, at least get on the agenda to be discussed about the Second Amendment sanctuary that we should have in this county has still been ignored, and that is definitely on your shoulders because we should have our Second Amendment rights supported in this county, and I think a resolution to that effect would be in the very minimum that you folks should do. Get it on the agenda, both of those items. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee.
Next up, we have in chambers, Ms. Barb Mathers, followed by Mr. George Lee.
Welcome, Ms. Mathers.
Barb Mathers, resident of northern Nevada, I've lived here my whole life. I've stated this a couple of times, I've literally never been sad for my state since now, under the reign of Sicilac. He has absolutely no indication of caring for his constituents at all, the children especially. I'm a mom, I work from home, I flip furniture, and I'm homeschooling my third grader because I don't want him to go to school in prison. I don't want him to wear a mask eight hours a day and not be able to play on the playground with more than two kids in his class. Sicilac is a dirtbag, and he doesn't care about our state, and he's keeping us closed. He's hurting my children, he's hurting my children's friends because he doesn't care about them. He's making money while so many businesses are closed. We shouldn't have to go into a Costco and wear a mask on our face that is overstepping the bounds of our state mandates. It's 10 and under doesn't have to wear a mask. In Costco, two-year-olds have to have a mask on their face. I'm not okay with that, and the only reason I support that is because my husband works there. I don't have a choice. I would like to know why Nevada is not open. I would like to know why masks are still being enforced. The CDC just recently submitted their numbers that masks are 2% effective. Do you understand how small that percentage is? Children do not get COVID on a regular basis. The percentage of children who are affected by this is 100%, who are mentally affected and emotionally affected, but to get COVID is a teen and 10%. And there is no way, I know that you're pro getting vaccines for the children, Commissioner Hill, my kids are not getting the vaccine, there's no way they're getting the vaccine. Children do not get it, they do not spread it, and the odds of them getting it are really slim. I want to know why we're not open when other states are opening all over the place. Many of them never even closed at 100% capacity. Why are we still closed? And why aren't you looking at me? I'm talking to you. It's incredibly rude to not look at someone when they're talking to you. Nevada needs to open 100%. We need to get rid of the mask mandates. If people want to wear a mask, they can wear a mask, that's totally fine, but they should not be forced. We should be making our own decisions for our own health, whether we are wearing masks or not, and especially for children. I'm doing this for my kids and for other children who don't have a voice. Open Nevada up.
Mr. George Lee, followed by Ms. Doty.
Welcome, Mr. Lee.
Thank you. Hey, I'm here to talk about several different things, but this, the program that Paul brought forward, and he's, this is not the first time he's mentioned it, you know the reason why he only has three people in that? It's because the people refuse to get clean, to get drug-free, to get, you know, it's not his fault, it's not your fault, it's their fault, and you are pandering to them by trying to rewrite the zoning laws so that tiny houses can be stacked somewhere to move the, move the problem, to get them out of their tents, or whatever the reason is. You know, you're rezoning so that these tiny houses can be put in little tiny lots, you know, making sizing of lots change, right? Isn't that what it's about? It's not about the money, it's about shelving them somewhere, and you know what? New York is full of projects where they tried to shelve them. Chicago is full of, of hellholes where they tried to shelve them. That's not the answer. The answer is, go out, find the ones who want help, and the rest of them, arrest them for drugs, for, you know, mental health issues, the things that they really have and need help with. You guys are not, you guys are, it's, it's a, that's not all I wanted to talk about. But anyway, I support the previous guys that were up here. You are pandering to these people, and you know what? You think you have a problem now? Here comes spring and summer. You think it's bad now? As soon as Utah decides to send the buses full of them, and Sacramento sends the buses full of them, this is going to be a freaking zoo as soon as they hear, oh, nice housing, we'll just go there. You're not going to be able to keep up with the number of homeless, quote, homeless, that are coming. If you pander to them, they will come. You need to do something to really help them. Find the ones who want to get off the drugs and the alcohol and the other things, and find the ones who have mental health problems, and find the ones that all they want to do is live in a tent along the river, and tell them you're causing pollution in the sense of every time they take a dump by the river, it goes in the river eventually. I mean, you have a real mental health and, and public health issue that you need to, to go out and you-
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Lee. Thank you, Mr. Lee. Next.
I believe we need Kitty Jung back on the phone. Commissioner Jung?
Yes. Please.
Hi, this is Kitty.
Commissioner Jung, we got you back? You good?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
Next up, in chambers, we have Ms. Doty.
Ms. Doty.
I want you to know that I oppose the bill SB 111. I don't think anybody should just be slipped into any position. They should be voted in by the people. We, the people, should vote them in to any position. Yes, we pay their bills, yes, we pay you guys too. No one should be just pushed into any place, any, any state or council or anything. We, the people, should be voted, to be led to be voted on who we want in office, period.
Thank you.
We will move on to Zoom. We have Jamie Golden on Zoom. She also submitted two emails for the record.
All right. Ms. Golden, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. The floor is yours, ma'am.
Great, thank you. Hello, my name is Jamie Golden, and I've been a resident of Incline Village for 49 years and attended Incline Elementary, Middle, and High School. I've been selling real estate in Incline for the past 30 years and fortunate to be able to raise my family here. Both of my daughters went through the Incline School System as well. Myself, along with countless local residents, do not feel the purchase of the old elementary school site or a mobility hub is the highest and best use for that property. It will only increase traffic congestion coming into Incline in the Tahoe Basin. I'm guessing 90% of summer visitors who are coming up from the surrounding areas are going to the lake or hiking trails. Once they arrive at the old elementary school site, then what? All three beaches in Incline are private deed restricted, and they will not be within walking distance to any hiking trails. Visitors will have no other choice but to get on a bus in order to get to the east shore for public access to the lake and hiking trails, creating a park-and-ride situation. This is not a solution to the current traffic congestion issue. My colleague, who also grew up in Incline and very familiar with the old elementary school site, has submitted an offer to the Washoe County School District to purchase the old elementary school site. The development plan would create something similar to the village at North Star with underground parking, retail, ice skating rink, public park and residential. This would give Incline Village a town center which it desperately needs and spur redevelopment of the surrounding areas which has been long overdue. Incline Village has been a wonderful community to us, and we would love the opportunity to be able to give something back to our hometown. We request that Washoe County not release the remaining 285,000 of the budgeted 300,000 for parks. Can you please confirm you are in receipt of the offer to purchase the old elementary school site? Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Golden.
Next up on Zoom, we have Judith Miller.
Ms. Miller, can you hear us? Ms. Miller?
It, it takes just a second for the unmute to come up on my screen.
Gotcha. Okay, Ms. Miller, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Some time ago, an item was removed from your agenda regarding the use of regional park funds for the proposed purchase of the elementary school site. I'm also a resident of Incline Village, by the way, to use the land for a mobility hub. If the county's still considering partnering with TTD in this purchase, I hope it will withhold that offer until a more suitable site is, is found. Contrary to Mr. Hasty's claim that this is a use-it-or-lose-it situation, the grant that he's applied for, for these transportation projects are available on an annual basis. Now that you know, there is another higher offer to purchase the site that's much more compatible with the needs and desires of the community, I hope you will hold support. I also wanted to speak on the upcoming second reading of the short-term rental regulations. Last week, I came across an article in the Sierra Nevada University's student paper, that's the university here in Incline Village, and it's entitled Ivy Housing Demand Pressed by Vacation Rentals. I know you haven't heard too much from the students, but I thought you would like to hear some excerpts from Maggie Galloway, editor of their, the college paper. College students at Sierra Nevada University struggle with finding affordable housing. Being a full-time student and working a part-time job doesn't make rent, at least not anymore. Off-campus housing for college students is becoming extremely limited, as well as extremely expensive. The other big competitor with affordable housing is short-term vacation rentals such as Airbnb or VRBOs. People are simply buying property just to rent and make an income. Most of those Airbnbs that are being rented out are the only affordable housing in Incline Village. College student and full-time pizza delivery man Luca Gianini feels like the short-term vacation rentals have taken over most of his neighborhood. I live in the racket club, and most of the condos are Airbnbs. I come from home from work late at night, and it's impossible to find parking. Some of the rentals are also a partying with loud noise until 1:00 a.m. It feels like people forget that people actually live in Tahoe, and it's not just one big vacation for everybody. So where will we put our workforce and students with our growing population and diminishing affordable housing? So I hope when you consider the second reading next week that you will give some thought to these students and other workforce members of our community who are being forced out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
The last speaker, it appears, on Zoom is Nicholas St. John.
Welcome, Mr. St. John.
Thank you. I have three issues. One is the, that we demand a forensics audit of the voter rolls to get them cleaned up. We need to have someone who will analyze them, remove all those still on the rolls through, although they are deceased, and also validate that if they are on the rolls, that they are in fact a resident of Washoe County, and then remove all invalid entries. Second, I've, after our looking at the updates to the short-term rental modifications and talking to a number of people, this is an issue in the Incline Village area that I understand, and while I support them being able to come up with a resolution, the resolution should not be county-wide, it affects a very small area out of an entire county, and so I'm asking you to vote no on that, on those modifications, and work with the Incline Village area to come up with a resolution that works, will work for everyone. We know that this coun, this country is based on free enterprise and capitalism, and so when there are businesses that come up like Airbnb and the Verboz, that they have a right in this country, according to Article 6 of the Constitution, to have a business and maintain their right as a business owner or property to do with, within reason. Again, I apologize for anyone who's having to have neighbors who are disrespectful and not being courteous with parties that are late, but again, that affects a very small amount of people, and we, and if they were, if you guys were to pass this thing with the upgrades, that would affect the entire county, all 470-some-thousand people here. And so I think that's a, you know, we're back to a one-size-fits-all, and categorically, one-size-fits-all never works in any situation. That's why we have federal, then we have state, and then we have county, and then we have cities, because we are trying to do things that work with that specific group of people. The third thing is that I want to see on, you guys, a couple of you at least should have received emails with our petition that we have now signing, being signed, there are over 400 patriots out signing the Second Amendment Sanctuary County petition, and that number is growing, and we're gaining significant momentum, so we'd like to see that put on, on the agenda for discussion, and we will probably, once we see that, you'll see that there is a huge amount of support in this county, like the other 10 counties in Nevada that have already adopted a section, Second Amendment Sanctuary County status. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. St. John.
We do have somebody else signed in, Ms. Sarah Schmidt on Zoom.
Ms. Sarah Schmidt.
Thank you very much. I hope you can hear me. I apologize, I'm driving, and I'm trying my best not to have road noise. I appreciate the opportunity to speak today. One of the things when I was appointed as trustee roughly a little over a year ago, it seemed as though the county commissioners really wanted to establish a better relationship, a better working relationship with the citizens of Incline Village in Crystal Bay and the county, and we would like the same thing as well. And what we are feeling and what we are seeing and observing is that TTD is not listening to our community. TTD had a meeting last week where they stated that the objective of the, the mobility and the transit hubs is to keep cars out of the basin. If that is what their goal is, then they should be seeking out building transportation hubs on the other side of the basin, not within the basin, drawing more cars into the basin, building more parking lots, and not actually resolving their problem. So we are asking you to help us to take a higher and better offer for that property and encourage TTD to really look outside of the basin for building their mobility hub, and there, that will help them to accomplish their goal of keeping cars out of the basin. I would really hope that the county commissioners, again, with this second reading, will make some adjustments that have been asked for from our community. We really would like to improve and, and have a good working relationship, and that takes communication and it takes cooperation, and I will do everything in my power, and I'm asking you, as commissioners, to please take corrective action with TTD, take corrective action on the short-term rental ordinance, and show that you too are interested and willing in improving the relationship between the county and the people of Incline Village. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. All right.
I have nobody else signed in.
Do you have anybody else for your Zoom? All right, so you have no further public comment, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the board. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chair, that takes us to item number four, which is Commissioners' County Managers' Announcements, Reports, and Updates to Include Boards and Commission Updates, Requests for Information or Topics for Future Agendas, and I do not have anything for you today.
Okay. Then we'll jump right out into Commissioners. Commissioner Hill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With the upcoming House approval of the federal COVID-19 relief projects that will be going down to the county, I'd love to see an update from staff on what that would look like and what sort of projects that we've got in the pipeline for that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. And then Vice Chair Hartung, I have you signed in next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Solero, you and I have already talked about this, and that is the need for a four-way stop at Dolores and Aaron due to an accident, so I don't know whether you need to agendize that item, or we can just get it done, or how, how we have to get that completed. We've had another one there, this is probably the, my goodness, it's, it's probably the sixth or more accident that we've, that we've had at that intersection. more accident that we've had at that intersection in maybe just as many years, but they seem to go in two or three at a time. We had one about six months ago also that was pretty nasty. So I'd like to, I'd like to get that done sooner rather than later, hopefully before spring, when the kids really start coming out and are using that area. I too, and I know we've talked about this, I talked about this with the manager, sadly, he's not here today, but that's okay. He's on much-needed rest and relaxation. I'd like to see what the voter registrar is doing to remove deceased individuals from the voter rolls, how that occurs. And I have a cross-reference of my own that I'd like to just test the system with, just to see if it actually is accurate. And then I appreciate Mr. White's offer. But I think it's important to note, and Mr. Lee, you brought this up, it's important to note that in his email, he said to us, he'll take anyone clean, sober, and willing to work. Those people are already in our system, and we're working them through the system. Those are not the people that we need help with. So what I would like to do, Mr. Chair, if it's possible, maybe next month sometime, I know that this will take staff some time, because we're just now standing some of these facilities up with our regional partners. But I've said this on a number of occasions, I have no issue with housing them, but I want, they must be in some type of a program. I want them in Silver 24, or Crossroads, or, you know, one of the many programs that we have. And I know we've done that in a number of places already. I know Step Two, which is a wonderful organization, has also accomplished that. So I would like to, I'd like to just hear from staff how we're accomplishing that, because I know that that's one of our absolute goals, to understand what the programs are, what they look like, and maybe create and try to understand some type of a metric of how long people are in our system and what our success rates are. And that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Commissioner Herman, I have you send in next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to thank all the folks in the audience that have come in to speak today. And it's very, very enlightening to me, because I really feel that this is the place to do it. So, and I hope we're getting more successful in getting something done that you've requested, because we work for you. And I believe there was somebody, a gentleman out there, that wanted to speak in public comment, and we missed him. Is that true? Yes, two, two of them.
I can speak before I give my presentation, so I apologize for item 16.
All right, hold on one second. Thank you. So they're on for item 16.
Okay, all right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman. Commissioner Jung, I have you sign in next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I would also remind staff, as Vice Chairman Hartung did, which is, in the registrar's processes and procedures, I want to see the connection, and if there is not a connection, when will it be connected? For the digital data to be downloaded, it's automatically when the health district offers a death certificate, because I don't believe that that's seamless at that point. That might be a funding issue, which I would support funding, so that there aren't any fat finger errors or drop issues. We live in a digital universe with lots of technology. Let's make sure the things, those things that don't need human interaction and intervention can be done, and done in a uniform and seamless way, so that absolutely everybody is convinced that the elections are absolutely as clean and fair as they possibly can be. And I believe there's a lot more we can do there as well as a county. So that's all that I wanted to say, was just a reminder to staff, and I'm sure the manager already has this scheduled out, and the chair is probably rolling his eyes, because he knows when it's coming up. But I am just saying, since we brought it up, I don't want to forget that critical piece. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung, I do appreciate it. I'd like to make a couple of comments on some stuff that I drafted from the public comments. Some notes that I wrote down. Mr. Manager, Mr. Slaro, can you bring me back some information in regards to this park fund's utilization to purchase the property up at the old Incline Village site, the elementary school site? I'd like to know a little bit more detail information, so if you could get that to me offline, or just send me something, that'd be great. Ms. Doty did bring up a discussion about SB 111, and I can, I'll speak to that at, in Item 14, which is our legislative update, so for the commission, so that we can kind of go over that. But it is a discussion about education, the Board of Trustees with the school board, and how those trustees would be placed on that board. So, school board, it's just for, it's just for the Board of Trustees for the school board in Clark County and Washoe County. So I can get, I'll cover that a little bit further in the legislative update to give some context to that. And one other thing that I'd like to be, to bring up again, Mr. Manager, is a discussion that the Vice Chair pointed out to me, is on Mount Rose Highway, we had another head-on collision this weekend. And it is continually an issue on that stretch of road due to lighting, due to, you know, the traffic management up and down through that area. And as we continue to develop on both sides of that road, it is challenging that we need to get either traffic signals, or lights, or a little bit more movement from Nevada, the state of Nevada down there, NDOT, to address those situations, because they're serious. Not only on Mount Rose Highway, but on Pyramid Highway, we still have the same issues out on Pyramid Highway, going out through Warm Springs and also into Cold Springs. So we need to have those discussions and kind of get an update from NDOT where we are, if there is any studies going on, or what the scoop is. Like to get something back to this board from them as well. And I have nothing else, but Mr. Vice Chair, I have you send back in.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And yeah, you knocked it loose. And we've talked about this every meeting at RTC, every single meeting, we ask about Mount Rose, and we ask about Pyramid Highway. But I think you bring up a really good point. Perhaps we do need to have this conversation, and maybe we can have, maybe even the district engineer, Mike Feist, come in from NDOT, and just have this conversation about what's happening. Are there studies going on? Because the far north end of Pyramid Highway is two lanes.
Yeah.
And through Spanish Springs, it's two lanes. And there's more and more development that's occurring. I know we've got some intersections slated for lights and et cetera, but that's not enough. And I know RTC is dealing with some of this stuff, but there are some things that I think that can be done to make those corridors much safer. And I'm thankful that you brought that up on the Mount Rose Highway. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll get that, we'll get those definitely on the agenda, hopefully in future months to have those discussions. All right, seeing nothing further from anybody else, close Item Four, and we are on to Item Five. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chair, that takes us to Item Number Five, which is an appearance and discussion by Ken Cullum, the District Manager of Carson City District of Bureau of Land Management. And with Mr. Cullum, we also have Logan Briscoe and Lisa Ross. So I will turn this over to Mr. Cullum.
Great. Mr. Cullum, welcome.
Thank you. Commissioners, thank you for having us today. I wanted to introduce myself. I'm the new District Manager for the Carson City District BLM, or Bureau of Land Management. And we also have with us.
Yeah, good morning. Logan Briscoe, I'm the Supervisory Law Enforcement Ranger for Zone One, which is Carson City District and Winnemucca Districts.
I just wanted to say, last fall, we decided to ramp up, really get our arms around the issues in the urban interface and public lands management. And Mr. Briscoe, who's been here for a number of years, has a working knowledge of most of this, and give an in-depth presentation of the items we've identified as Bureau of Land Management from our perspective.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Cullum. Mr. Briscoe.
All right. Good morning again. So 10 minutes, so these are issues that I could probably talk about all day, so I'll try to make it work here. I'm going to go really quickly through our top five. Number one is transient camps. And, you know, right now, at any given time, we're looking at 25 to 30 transient camps that are on public lands, specifically in Washoe County in the North Valleys area. Management prayer number two is Moon Rocks. We'll go into a little bit more detail on Items Number One and Two, but Moon Rocks, as you can see in that picture, that's Memorial Day weekend, continues to grow. We're seeing groups as big as 5,000 to 6,000 people on certain weekends at Moon Rocks. Prayer number three is target shooting. Not going to go into depth on this, but there is one slide at the end that kind of will show you where we plan on going with this. And this is, again, working with partners to try to identify areas that people can safely shoot, and do so in accordance with county, state, and federal laws. Prayer number four is abandoned vehicles. Just last year alone, BLM law enforcement removed over 30 abandoned vehicles. Campers such as this one can run as much as $5,000. It is a very big burden on our budget, and we are not actually given any dollars for removal of these vehicles. So this becomes a challenge, and oftentimes, these vehicles will sit on public lands until they deteriorate into conditions like that. And the last one is trash dumping. So I will say, I don't want to put a negative spin on all of this stuff. We have great partners that really help us out in Washoe County, to name a few. We have Hills Angels, Reno Area Dirt Riders, KTMB, Desert Pigs, a lot of groups out there that have really been very helpful in keeping public lands cleaned up. So I wanted to give a shout out to those groups, because that is a tremendous help, and it eases the burden on everybody. So specific to transient camps, starting April 1st, BLM will be closing certain areas within Washoe County to camping, which also obviously includes campfires. Those areas have been identified based on patterns that we've seen over the last three years, a tremendous increase in transient camping, to the point where there's very little, if any legitimate camping, that's occurring in these areas. So biggest areas we're talking about are Sun Valley, Golden Valley off of Patrician and Estates, and then also Lew Allen to Pyramid Disc, that section of public lands. And really, you know, the transient camping comes with several issues that we'll go into detail, but we're using existing authority we have from a Federal Register notice that allows management to close certain public lands to camping, you know, for resource protection, for public health and safety. Public health and safety is a big one. Here you have a situation where a camper is dumping black water onto the ground. There's litter all around the camp. And, you know, this creates concerns, because a lot of these campsites are continuously occupied. Even if people leave, somebody else fills in behind them, and it really is a detriment to public health and safety issues. Resource damage is another concern. You know, in this picture right here, that's an abandoned trailer, there's a burned-out vehicle, this just kind of captures a lot of the issues that we deal with. Transient camps, a lot of times, people have a camper, an RV or motorhome, it breaks down. It's not currently registered, and so when it's time to leave camp, they leave that behind, and we're left to use taxpayers' money to try to get rid of it. Negative impacts to legitimate users, this is jumbo grade trailhead. This is designed as an OHV trailhead. And as you can see, you know, you have this kind of activity that occurs in a trailhead, people aren't going to use the trailhead. And so we get a lot of complaints from members of the public who are trying to legitimately use public lands, but they simply don't want to use the area as it's designated for. This is one of our biggest issues, is limited patrol resources. That's the only ranger we have for all of Washoe County. So when you're one person, and it's with many urban issues that we have going on, it's very difficult for him to stay on top of issues when it comes to camping in particular. People move a couple miles, they don't actually go the 25 miles, which they're actually required to by law, and it's very difficult to keep up on that. So, you know, again, we look to partner with, we're good partners with Washoe County Sheriff's Office, but again, their resources are limited, and it just becomes a challenge. And the partnership and collaboration, so we do, you know, as a federal agency, we don't offer any services to these people, or we cannot provide them any services. But we do work with our county partners, with the sheriff's office, with most. If there's people that are in need of services, I don't want to paint a picture that we don't care about those individuals and their needs. We are trying to put them in contact with resources if they request the service. Oftentimes, we ask, and people do not want those services. But I did want to put this slide in there. This particular camp is the End of the World Camp. It sits east of Sparks, and this was a partnership with the sheriff's office and City of Sparks. And before, we told people that they had to leave, we made sure that they had access, or at least the potential to use services if they wanted it. So, you know, again, what we're looking to do, close these areas to camping. You know, any suggestions that you guys may have for us, is this, as we move into this time period on April 1st, you know, we'll be working with the sheriff's office, we will set up coordination meetings and provide them maps of the closure areas, which will also be available to the public. And, you know, we're going to have a public education period. We're not just going to come in and start issuing citations. We do, it's a change in pattern in public land use, so we're going to have to make those notifications. Moon Rocks. Talked a little bit about it briefly. BLM is supposed to release the environmental assessment for Phase One management of Moon Rocks, and I'll get into a little bit of details of what Phase One will look like. It's to address public health and safety issues. It's to address sanitation issues, and basically recognize that this area has now become a off-highway vehicle area that is being used by a tremendous amount of people. So we did receive funding for Phase One from the Nevada OHV grant. So that is going to provide funding to do some of the Phase One implementation. And then there's also going to be a Phase Two, which is three to five years out, and that'll be just more in-depth planning for the Moon Rocks area. So public health and sanitation. So here's a photo, Memorial Day weekend. This is an area that's called Big Wash, up on the hill. It's another camping area called Middle Flat. And as you can see, a lot of users, 5,000 to 6,000 people on this particular weekend, and currently we don't have dumpsters. We don't provide any type of restroom facility. There's just no infrastructure out there. So because of that, we've gotten a lot of complaints. We've got some public comments that people want to see those basic infrastructure out there. And again, we're using the OHV grant, that a lot of these users are there specifically for OHV use. They're paying their OHV registration fees, so that money is now going to come back into this area and provide some better services. Public safety. So our Phase One plan will designate this as a developed recreation area. What that does not mean, it does not mean that it's a fee area. So developed recreation area just means there's basic services and infrastructure that BLM is now providing. And that provides us management tools. Some good examples of that, no fireworks will be allowed. There's not going to be target shooting allowed in the recreation area. No dumping of black water. So really, it's a recognition that there's developed levels of recreation occurring on what right now is undeveloped. And then the other component is OHV management trail maintenance. So this is a 19,000-acre project area, and it's currently open to cross-country travel. So that makes it a very big draw for OHV users. You have a combination of trail riding, you have a combination, you also have technical rock crawling, and a lot of different activities that occur, but it's drawing a lot of people, both from the area and also outside of the area, who are seeking these open opportunities. So again, the environmental assessments coming out should be released by next week. So we're looking for, you know, any public comment, there's going to be a 30-day public comment period on that. And, you know, any support you guys can provide as a county, again, we partner you guys can provide as a county, again, we partner with the sheriff's office on patrolling on these busy weekends, and, you know, also working with them on targeting some of the underage drinking parties that are occurring out there, where we've had some pretty serious incidents that have occurred due to those activities. And briefly, I got a minute and a half, so I think I'll get through this. So target shooting, this is the next big project that's up, coming up. We've already had two meetings with partners and members of the public, where we are basically trying to recognize that target shooting is a legitimate use of public lands. There's a lot of people around here that like to do it and are very passionate about it, but we also recognize that that has to be done in accordance with county, state, and federal laws. And right now, one of the biggest issues that we experience, people are shooting in a congested area, or they're shooting too close to an occupied dwelling, which is a county ordinance that Washoe County has, but they're on BLM land, and BLM doesn't have a parallel law. So trying to just make sure that in these congested areas, you know, we probably need to be on the same page and make sure that we're all managing these areas in a similar fashion. So here's the big issues, trigger trash. Some of these sites are considered hazardous sites. We had one in particular that was off of Chimney in Sun Valley that cost the federal government sixty thousand dollars to clean up because of lead concerns. So again, there's a right way to do it, and we're looking at ways to do that, whether it be a semi-developed, developed recreation, but provide those opportunities. Fire danger is another big concern. We see several fires started over the last ten years from target shooting. Public safety, you have people shooting in recreation areas, you have people shooting next to subdivisions. And then the last one there is the lack of access to developed ranges. We've continuously heard that that's a concern. The only developed range right now is off Pyramid Highway, and a lot of people complain that's just too far away, and they'd like to see more opportunities. So, all right? A little over.
That's okay, Mr. Briscoe. Thank you, I appreciate the information. It's very prudent information, especially with a number of topics that keep arising here in the commission chambers. I do want to thank you for coming. Mr. Cullen, thank you for coming as well. I know you also have, Ms. Ross is with us as well, she's here with us, so thank you all for coming and participating today. And part of, now, I do have some questions from the commissioners for you, so turn it over to Vice Chairman Hartung.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Briscoe, I've got a question for you guys, and I don't know whether you've done this, and it's not spoken in the pejorative, whether you've done the math and actuarial. Take the cost of going out and salvaging a vehicle and verse that with having a potential program whereby, if I've got a vehicle that I need to get rid of, that I can bring it to you or get it picked up where I don't have to go out and illegally dump it. Now, I recognize that a lot of them are stolen, and people aren't going to participate in stolen vehicles, you know, to dispose of them. But perhaps we could partner, because I know it's an expensive endeavor for the sheriff's office, I know it's an expensive endeavor for you guys, it's just, it's an expensive endeavor for the region as a whole. So have you looked at that, at the possibility of creating some kind of a program where it might be cheaper to actually try to cut these things off at the pass, as it were?
Yeah, so that's a, I think the biggest challenge for abandoned vehicles, Nevada's not a titling state, so you're, a lot of these transactions are occurring between private individuals, and there's no requirement that they submit anything to DMV. And so a lot of what we deal with, the previous register and honor might have been five or six years ago, and we go knock on their door, they don't remember who they sold it to. So we run into that situation, a lot of people don't have title to these vehicles, and because of that, they can't legally take it to a recycler.
A salvage.
Yep, so it just ends up coming out on the public lands. So yeah, I mean, it's, we're looking for any solutions to help that issue, but it's very difficult for us. I think of the thirty vehicles that we had in Washoe County, we had one suspect.
Right.
Just because of the titling issue.
Right. There's got to be a better solution, and I don't know what it is. I don't want to encourage the salvage of the illegally possessed vehicles, as it were, but there's just, there's got to be a better way. And then, we've wanted to create more shooting ranges, but it, the process to get through BLM's paperwork, it's arduous. I mean, it's, I mean, I remember a number of years ago, not anything to do with a shooting range, there was a fellow who wanted to purchase a piece of property out off of I-80 to, he wanted the three, it was a three-hundred-and-thirteen-acre BLM parcel that was an old aggregate pit that was used when I-80 was built out east. He wanted to build a racetrack there. He had investors ready to do this. We came down to Carson City, neither one of you were there. This has been when I first got elected, so it's been, I don't know, eight-ish years ago, maybe a little less, seven and a half. We came to Carson City, and we were told by staff in Carson City that, yeah, we can fast-track this, we should be able to have it done in ten or fifteen years to get it moved over to the disposal list. So if somebody wants to create a range, what's the process that we have to go through? How do we, how do we do that? How do we fast-track it? Because BLM is, I mean, sometime in a private conversation, I can tell you with my own angst of issues that I've had with BLM in another state of property that I own, and it's just, it's just an arduous trek. So it's not just, it's BLM in general.
So it does take a while for any kind of land transfers, and especially for selling land to the public, and that basically has to go out for a competitive bid. We can't just sell land to a specific person, so that's part of the process. The absolute best way, the quickest way to get shooting ranges and other exchanges of land is through legislation. And so anytime you can work with Congress to affect that, because that basically kind of takes us out of the picture a little bit.
Right.
And then it's a quick transfer for us once legislation goes through. But it does take years, if not years and years, to get a land transfer done.
Yeah.
And the other way to do a shooting range is through our Recreation Public Policy Act, which is transferring technically the patent to the counties.
Right.
And so, you know, they're however, ninety-nine-year leases, and they can be patented down the road. But that is also a mechanism where, you know, then the county would obviously be operating under the purpose of that lease. So if you get the lease for shooting, you can't put a comp site on it. So there's a very specific purpose.
No, 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 and I understand, that's how we did Golden Eagle Park in Sparks.
Right, right. So, yeah. I would recommend as we move forward, because as Logan mentioned, you know, we're going to shooting next, once we start getting these other two, is that if we could sit down with the county and really, and interested parties, which we've already started last January, you had a meeting here last fall, to really kind of come up with a bigger plan, instead of an ad hoc shooting range here, you know, archery range here, really to look at the urban interface and see how we can best serve the public on that, using public lands as part of that.
No, okay.
So, we'd really be looking forward to working with you all and our partners on that.
As do we, yeah. I want it to be a symbiotic relationship. I'm looking forward to that. And what I heard you say loud and clear is a lands bill. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you for allowing me to speak, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the hard work that you've done on the lands bill.
Right, Sharon, we've got Commissioner Herman signed in.
It took us a long time to get you folks here. I'm sorry for that. I kept pushing for it, but we just didn't get it on the agenda, and it's been over a year, year and a half. And I thank you for all the hard work you did before when we located that property and we had it all lined up to be used for that purpose, and so I'm hoping maybe we can still get that together, because that would solve so many problems for you as BLM and for our county. Our shooters that we have here are, they're just desperately in need of a place. I mean, we are, we need desperately to get this, and anything that I can do, or however we need to work on this. And Lisa, thank you for getting everything rolling for way back when we were having the meetings about this issue of messes on the desert and all the destruction that's taking place out there. So it's a pleasure to have all of you here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner John, I have you signed in next.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you Bureau of Land Management for this presentation today. But the only thing I would like to say, and I know you're advised by the cream of the crop of attorneys, is let's just be very careful about who we see as desirable or undesirable to use the land that belongs to every single one of us. And I do understand that overstaying vis-à-vis people who are unhoused is a problem, but they have every right to use it within the scope of the law, as does anybody else whom we would like to do it. And I know you're sensitive to this and aware of that, but I think, considering we've made national news about Empire Nevada vis-à-vis the movie Nomadland, the book is much better, I encourage everybody to read it, there is a growing population of retiring adults who have absolutely nothing in terms of pittance of social security, and live in their vehicles, and go from very low-paid jobs like Walmart or Amazon fulfillment centers during the busy seasons, and then go do sugarbeats during the winter. So they are effectively another growing class of our population that they call themselves nomads, and I just want to be, just be on the record, let's be delicate and sincere and make sure that everybody's rights are preserved to enjoy the land that we all pay for and own. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner John, I do appreciate it. Mr. Cullen, Mr. Briscoe, I do have a couple of questions for you. You know, you mentioned a number of your priorities, obviously, with, you know, the camping and target shooting and some of the recreation issues. The only other issue that seems to always be a constant reminder, I know, for Commissioner Herman, myself, Commissioner Hardtung, especially in our districts, is the wild horse issue, and it continues to be a challenge. I know we have to work with the state and with you and a number of different entities to address it. What have you, is that something you guys continue to work on? I know I've spoken with Director Abi a couple of times about it, and out of the Nevada office, but you're in the Carson office, correct, Mr. Briscoe? What are the plans to address some of the wild horse issues from BLM's standpoint? I mean, you still have, I know you have the ranch out on Pyramid, on Pyramid Highway, but is there, have you guys been working on roundups still? Are you guys working with, you know, the Department of Ag at the state to deal with that as well, or is there plans?
Right, so, yeah, we do conduct gathers still, but those are dictated from our national office, and so what we do is when we're all over appropriate management level, anywhere from double the amount that's supposed to be there to up to ten times the amount. And so because Nevada's earmarked for approximately, let's see if I get this right, I think it's eleven thousand horses, and we're at over fifty thousand horses, and those numbers are probably a little off, we're way behind the eight ball, and simple gathers at this time is not going to get us caught up. We don't have a good solution. We are looking at, obviously, we look at sterility control, and that's one of the big ones, but we get gathers as they come up if there's a need for health and safety or a need for horse health, and then, as you know, when we gather, they end up in the Midwest. So right now, we're struggling. It's not, there's no easy fix to this, that's been apparent. So we are continuing to do gathers, but they're going to still be sporadic, and we're getting further and further behind, and resource damage is showing that. So I don't have any upbeat news on the horse program at this time.
Yeah, I know it's a challenge, and continually, I see, you know, as the water becomes more scarce up in the hills, especially in the Virginia range, a lot of those horses and burrows are, well, not any burrows, but horses are coming down close to that southeast connector into Hidden Valley area, Double Diamond, and I know we've had a number of accidents, you know, including vehicles late at night with some foals, and, you know, so it starts being a challenge, you know, when we start having that integration between the wild horses and us. So whatever we can do to continue to work on those issues with you, it'd be tremendously helpful for us here in the county, and I know for everybody, so appreciate that. Any further questions from any of the commissioners, or any comments? All right, thank you very much, gentlemen.
And just real quick, yeah, I'd like to add that we, if you want us as a standing agenda item monthly or quarterly, we can go in more depth on any of these topics or any issues that you want to talk about, or we can just come and give you an update of where the BLM stands within Washoe County at any particular time with projects, and maybe we can hopefully have some optimism about horses in the future.
That'd be great, Mr. Cullen. You know what, we'll look into that, and maybe also agendas it at the same time, and have the sheriff kind of accompany you, and you guys can talk about some of the issues that they're coordinating, you guys are coordinating on as well.
Good.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Ross, appreciate it. All right, Mr. Manager, we are on to our consent agenda.
That's right, Mr. Chair, it takes item number six A, one through six G, which is your consent agenda.
Great. Any changes that we need to the consent, Mr. Manager, or is it ready for approval?
It is ready for you.
All right, Commissioners, is there anything in the consent agenda that anybody would like pulled or have any further discussion on? All right, seeing none, looking for a motion?
Still moved.
I have a motion. Do I have, and I have a second, a motion from Vice Chairman, second from Commissioner Herman. Do we have any public comments signed in on any of the items under six A through six G?
I have nobody signed in.
All right. Commissioner Hill?
Oh, I just wanted to make a comment that six G is a really exciting program with financial literacy for our inmates, so I want to commend the sheriff for doing that. It's going to be on their iPads before their release, so it's a great program.
That's fantastic. Thank you for sharing. All right, I have a motion and a second, we have no public comment. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously with all Commissioners voting. All right. Mr. Vice Chairman, do we have, do you have a block vote for us this morning?
I do, I do. For your consideration, I would offer that we put into a block vote items number seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, thirteen, and fifteen. And I know that we have, for item number fifteen, we've got the Bureau of Indian Affairs contract, Captain Mark Bellow on Zoom, if there are any questions on that item.
Fantastic, all right. So I have a, I have a motion to put into block item seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, thirteen, and fifteen. Do I have a second?
A second, and I would also like to say for item eleven, I just commend the staff on the home delivery program that they transitioned to for our seniors, and I was able to deliver some of those meals during the peak of the pandemic, and so congratulations on doing that and making sure that our seniors get their service.
Great. All right, I have a motion and a second. Do I, Mr. Manager, do you want to read us, read those items into the record for me, please?
I'll do that. Item number seven is a recommendation to approve a construction change order for the South Trekkie Meadows Water Reclamation Facility 2020 Expansion Project, which reallocates duties and six hundred eighty-three thousand three hundred fifty-three dollars and forty cents in associated costs, agreed to in Guaranteed Maximum Price Agreement Number One to Guaranteed Maximum Price Agreement Number Two, which will increase the GMP Number Two contract in an amount, in an amount in excess of five percent for a total contract amount for GMP Number Two to three million four hundred thirty-seven thousand six hundred seventy-six dollars and forty cents, but which will not result in an increase in the total project costs. Item number eight is a recommendation that the Board of County Commissioners move to approve the award of Washoe County's independent audit services to BDO USA LLP for an initial contract period of two years effective March 2021, for fiscal years ending 2021 and 2022. If approved, staff will submit the notification of award to the Nevada Department of Taxation by March 31, 2021. Item number nine is a recommendation to approve a seventeen-month sub-recipient agreement with Board of Regents Nevada System of Education on behalf of the University of Nevada, Reno, early head start, to provide follow-up services to infants, families, and caregivers with Comprehensive Addiction and Recovery Act plans of care with Human Services Agency in an amount not to exceed one hundred fifty thousand seven hundred dollars, retroactive February 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022, and if approved, authorize the Director of Human Services Agency to execute the agreement and approve the resolution necessary for the same. Item number ten is a recommendation to approve Amendment Number One to the current inter-local contract. to the current interlocal contract between public agencies between the State of Nevada Department of Health and Human Services, Healthcare Financing, and Policy and Welfare and Supportive Services Division in Washoe County to maintain the County Match Program under Title 19 of the Social Security Act, assistance to individuals in long-term care facilities, amending the total contract amount not to exceed $12,722,750.14, and authorize the purchasing and contracts manager to execute the amendment. Item number 11 is a recommendation to accept two Notice of Subgrant Awards from the State of Nevada Aging and Disability Services Division for the following Older Americans Act Title III programs. Number one is the Congregate Meals, $312,180 with a match of $19,786, retroactive from October 1, 2020 through September 30, 2021. And number two is a Home Delivered Meals, an amount of $796,215.56 with a match of $79,362, retroactive from October 1, 2020 through September 30, 2021, and authorize the Director of Human Services Agency to execute the subgrant awards and related documents, and direct the comptroller to make the necessary budget amendments. Item number 13 is a recommendation to approve cross-fund, cross-functional budget appropriation transfers not to exceed $495,000 on an as-needed basis to the Indigent Fund from the General Fund, and direct the comptroller's office to make the necessary budget appropriation transfers, if this has a net impact of $0. And item number 15 is a recommendation to approve the Cooperative Agreement between the Bureau of Indian Affairs, Office of Justice Services Division of Corrections, District Three, and the Washoe County Adult Detention, Reno, Nevada, to house federal adult prisoners at the Washoe County Sheriff's Office Detention Facility at the current rate of $109 per day per inmate, retroactively for the period of July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, I do appreciate that. Being that we have a motion now for all the items and a second, and there was no public comment on any of the items, I'm assuming?
There is no public comment.
All right, seeing no public comment on the items, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Did I capture Commissioner Jung?
Commissioner Jung?
Thank you.
Commissioner Jung was an aye, so all commissioners have voted. Please affirm your votes on the screen. Motion carries unanimously with all commissioners voting. All right, Mr. Manager, that takes us on to item 12, I believe.
That is correct. Item number 12 is a recommendation to approve and execute an ordinance consenting and agreeing to be bound by the provisions of the Authority's Resolution, authorizing the issuance of the general obligation Reno Sparks Convention of Visitors Authority refunding bonds, Series 2021, in the maximum principal amount of $70 million, ratifying action taken, approving and confirming action to be taken in the Authority's financing and in the imposition, collection, and assignment of room taxes, and the pledge of such taxes to the bonds, prescribing other details in connection herewith, and providing its adoption as if an emergency exists and the effective date thereof.
All right, thank you, Mr. Manager. This is a, this is a vote for this item. It is, does require a supermajority of the commission to vote on this.
Mr. Chairman, if I might add, this is bill number 1855 and ordinance number 1664.
Okay, thank you. Bill 18, I'm sorry, would you read that one?
1855?
1855. 1654.
1664.
1664. Okay, thank you. We've done a number of these before. Obviously, this is the refunding of the bonds that are taken from RSCVA, Reno Sparks Convention of Visitors Authority, to secure their capital assets, i.e. the Convention Center and portions of the bowling stadium, the Livestock Events Center. So a number of those bonds that are, they're taking advantage of those interest rates. And being that they are a conduit of the county, all of their actions have to be secured by the taxing authority above them, which is this board and this organization based upon our bond rating. And so with that, is there any questions from any of the commissioners in regards to this, this item or issue that anybody wanted to bring forward? This was voted on by the Reno Sparks Convention of Visitors Authority Board and was passed unanimously at their last board meeting. So, and now it comes to us. So Commissioner Jung, I do have you signed in for, you have a question on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, it's to reiterate on the public record that the regional government, Washoe County, does this for a lot of different agencies and goes more to the fact that we are the government that serves all the people with the powers and the authorities that set therein. And this is a courtesy and a service in many ways, but also very much a necessity. And nobody else could do it but us in the region. I do have a question, though, as to the nature of these bonds. Are they general obligation bonds or revenue bonds? And why or why not?
We have bond counsel for Kendra Foletta and John Peterson from JNA. They can answer those for you, I believe, and they're on Zoom. Mr. Peterson?
Hello, this is John Peterson.
Go ahead, Mr. Peterson.
I would just say that they are general obligations, bonds of the county. However, they are secured by pledged revenues of RSCVA, which include the 6% kind of general room tax revenue that the RSCVA receives, the 2% tax that was approved back in 1999 for the construction of the Convention Center, as well as the facility revenues of RSCVA.
Can I answer your question, Commissioner?
Yes, thank you so much.
Okay. All right, any further questions from any of the commissioners on this item? All right, at this time, looking for a motion. Mr. Vice Chair?
I'm happy to make the motion unless you want to.
Please.
I know that you're the representative on RSCVA, but I would, I would move to approve and execute an ordinance, that is, ordinance 1855.
Or ordinance 1664. Bill number 18.
Bill, ordinance number 1664, I wrote them down backwards, I'm sorry. Boy, I'm having a good day. So I would move to approve and execute an ordinance, number 1664, consenting and agreeing to be bound by the provisions of the Authority's Resolution, authorizing the issuance of the general obligation bonds or limited tax. Reno Sparks Convention Visitors Authority refunding bonds additionally secured with pledged revenues, Series 2021, in the maximum amount of principal of $70 million, ratifying action taken, approving and confirming action to be taken in the Authority's financing and the imposition, collection, and assignment of room taxes, and the pledge of such taxes to the bonds, prescribing other details in connection herewith, and providing for its adoption as if an emergency exists and if the executive date there, and the executive date thereof.
Great, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir, there's not.
All right, seeing no public comment. All right, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the board. I have a motion and a second. All those in, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously with all commissioners voting. Please affirm, please affirm your vote. All right, and we are good. Thank you very much, thank you to bond counsel and all those joining us on the phone for this today. All right, so, Mr. Manager, we're on to item 14.
Yep, item 14 is a discussion in direction of staff regarding legislation and legislative issues proposed by legislators by Washoe County Trekkie Meadows Fire Protection District or others. And I do have a short report, or as I understand, you also would like to cover this item.
Yes.
So I've taken some notes there, so I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, I do appreciate it. As, as you know, this has been the fifth week session. And this is a report we bring back to the board as a whole in regards to items that we have been working on during session. This last week has been very busy and down at the, in Carson City, and a number of things to talk about. But I wanted to go over with everyone based upon the discussion from last week. We do have, we still have the staff direction from this board to support the items AB1, AB3, and AB33. AB33 was heard in Assembly Judiciary on last Monday. And our Human Services Director, Amber Howell, testified on that and was a very beneficial, with very limited feedback to that, so we had a good support there. SB11 still was heard on, in the Senate Revenue. This was on the Government Services Tax that, through the city of Reno, to be imposed. And there were some challenges from the members there on that item. So there are a lot of questions for the city of Reno in regards to that taxing authority and that ability. So that one still has some work to be done on it. We have your full list, that's been provided to you in front of you on a watch list. The one that isn't, that was brought up in public comment today by Ms. Doty was SB11. And I have the context, the text of SB11 and the basic overview of SB11. It is a provision relating to education. And this would be relating to the selection of the Board of Trustees for certain school districts and providing to matters thereto. And so what it would do would change ultimately that the construct in Washoe County and Clark County, based upon the number of enrolled students, would change that it would consist of seven members, three members that would be elected at large, one member which would be appointed by the Board of County Commissioners, and which the school district is located. And then three members would be appointed by governing bodies of three most populous incorporated cities. So that would be in Clark County. And then in Washoe County, where it would be a district between 75,000 pupils and 25,000, which would be Washoe County. That would be also a seven-member board, three members which would be elected at large, one member being appointed by the governor, and then one member being appointed by the Board of County Commissioners, which is the school district, and then two members being appointed by the governing bodies from the most populous cities, which would be Reno and Sparks. So those, and that would be a structural change from those individuals being voted on by wards, as they are currently, for the Board of Trustees and change that completely. So this has been introduced, and it is SB11. As of right now, it does not, I don't believe, have a, it's not agendized for a meeting yet. I can, and I'll pull that, but that will, I know Ms. Rodriguez is going to put that on our watch list for future meetings for us to pay attention. But one other bill that I did want to bring up, and staff is recommending we take, that we take direction on this, is AB196. This is a bill that's been introduced by the Assembly Majority Leader, Teresa Benitez-Thompson. And this would require courthouses to contain lactation rooms for members of the public under certain circumstances. Now, here in Washoe County, we have a number of, in our courthouse, all of our courthouses have these rooms available to the general public, and we are utilizing this. And so we are recommending that we support this bill and move forward with that. So now the only recommendation would be to move forward with support on AB196 at this time and continue to watch a number of the other bills that we are working on right now. So that is my report for everybody this week. We do have some more questions, some more hearings slated for next week. Also this week, we have a number of different presentations by legislative staff and that to the legislature, so we'll see how those meetings go. But with that, I will open it up for discussion. Vice Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, no, I, no other discussion other than 196. Yeah, I mean, why wouldn't we support that? I mean, I'd be ready to make a motion at any time, that's, that's just, that's essential.
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a good bill, and it's, it's, it's not, and there's been some consternation by some of the rural communities because it'd be an unfunded mandate. However, it is in the language of 196, it's the ability to opt out, so it's not a mandate. It's not a mandatory, it's more of a guideline or suggestion that as new facilities are built, that if you don't have those, that you could put, you would establish those in your counties. But being that our forethought of our staff and the court systems here already got, developed all our courtrooms with those thoughts in mind, we're doing that service, so it's, I think it's, I think it makes great sense to move forward with that. So any other comments from any of the commissioners? Commissioner Jung, do you have anything you'd like to add in regards to session?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Regarding the school district appointees, who's the sponsor of that bill?
I'll have to look into that, and I believe, I believe that's Senator Kekefer. But I, let me just confirm that for you, but I believe it's Senator Kekefer.
Okay, I need to, if staff can get me a history and a reasoning and what they're actually trying to fix, because at first glance, which does not mean this is thoughtful, but at first glance, my intuition is always what Ms. Doty said, which is I don't like taking that away from anything that voters can do away from them. And many times we hear certain areas of our judicial branch asking for that it should be appointment only. And I've been through an appointment process when I got into office through Governor Given. And I can tell you something, that's the most political thing you'll ever go through in your life, way more than a race asking for votes. So I'm very, very hesitant to ever support something like that. And would like to know, though, what are we trying to solve? What, what, what is X? What are we solving for? What is, what are the issues? And I believe a lot of it has to do with that the local jurisdictions of school boards really have no decision-making authority because it's all prescribed by state law. So, you know, they don't get to pick curriculum, they don't get to pick safety standards, they don't get to pick anything. It's one of the most hamstrung groups. So maybe that does make sense that it's not, it's taken completely out of the political realm and sent back up to the state because the state is where all the rules come from, which of course are fed to us through, through the federal government. So I need a whole lot more information to take any position, but I wanted to get on the record what my concerns are about taking away a voter's right to elect who represents them. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome, Commissioner Jung. Yes, that was Senator Ben Kekefer that introduced that bill, that he's the sponsor and the primary sponsor, and that's been referred to the Committee on Education. As of today, it's only been introduced and has not been scheduled for any hearings as of today. But that doesn't mean that it won't have something upcoming. But it has, there is no history or any upcoming hearings that has been posted so far to Nellis on that. So we'll keep an eye on that for everybody and get you some more information. Commissioner, Vice Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'd like to have information also. I, I'm curious, I think Commissioner Jung brings up a very salient point of what's it trying to fix? Is this, is this a solution looking for a problem? Or, I mean, what, what is, what are we trying to fix here by, by appointing, by us appointing and the municipalities appointing? And then three at large? I, it just doesn't make a lot of sense, and the governor makes an appointment.
Yeah, so the way the bill reads, that currently as drafted, that the commission, city Reno, city Sparks would be, would all appoint one member. There would be three at-large races that would be run for those seats, and then the governor would impact. And, you know, from my standpoint, what, Governor Sisalak is, is well-informed in regards to Southern Nevada. What is, what is his understanding of individuals that serve in Northern Nevada? You know, and I understand he has that ability to replace commissioners if they step and appoint individuals. But this puts a different discussion and a spin on things that, so I think we sit back and see what happens. Like I said, it hasn't been scheduled for any hearings thus yet, but we'll, we'll, we'll address it when it comes forward, so. All right, so any further discussion on any other items? If not, do we have any public comment on the?
On item 14, there is no public comment.
All right, seeing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the board. Vice Chairman, do you have a motion in regards to AB196 for support?
Yes, I would, I would move to direct staff to support AB196 as drafted.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I'd like to second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second from Commissioner Hill. I will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously for the support of AB196, so we will move that into.
Can I say something, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Jung? Yes, Commissioner Jung.
I just want to say that the, this issue as Vice Chairman Hartson mentioned is, is to him and probably most of us the moot point, but I think it's the coolest thing ever that a man was the one who made the motion for this vote. So all the social media people, which you guys all know, I've been on social media going on three years, so I never know what's going on in a good way. If I was a social media maven, Mr. Vice Chairman, I would put that everywhere. I think that women have come so far because men have supported women. Once they realize, you know, absolutely you all come from a woman, bottom line, but I just think that is, that deserves some sort of statement and I made it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. Do appreciate it. You can see Vice Chairman's smile from behind his mask right now.
Commissioner Jung, thank you so much. And you, you know I have a wife and a daughter and my favorite time in, not, not the favorite time, but a really favorite time for me was when my wife was pregnant and when our children were, were young. And, I mean, it's just, it's miraculous and that, and that is an understatement. And, and so I'm thrilled to support these kinds of measures. It's, it's absolutely essential.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much and we'll, we'll have more for you next week, or no, not next week, the following week for legislative update. All right, with that, we will close item 14 and we are now on to our public hearing. Mr. Manager, this takes us to item 16. So we'll open the public hearing.
Very well. Item 16 is appeal of the Washoe County Planning Commission's approval of the tentative subdivision map case number WTM 20-005 Woodland Village to allow the subdivision of an 8.6 acre property into 111 attached residential lots and the special use permit case number WSUP 20-0021 for Woodland Village to allow the use of single family attached residential units per table 110.302.05.1 to allow up to 14 dwelling units per acre in accordance with the Cold Springs Area Plan Policy CS.2.2.2 to decrease the number, or sorry, to decrease the front setback to eight feet and the rear and side setbacks to zero feet, to decrease the minimum lot width to 16 feet and to decrease the minimum lot size to 800 square feet. Now we have two, two appeals on this. One is by Mr. Derek Schopf, a resident of Cold Springs, and the other is by the applicant WWC Commercial LLC represented by Garrett Gordon. We do have staff available. Julie Olander is available to give you a presentation and then I believe we do have time for both, both appeals to be heard by this board as well.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I do appreciate it. As Mr. Manager Solero pointed out, we do have Julie Olander, Planner, Washoe County Staff Planner, to give us a presentation this morning. And then we have both appellants here, I believe, in the room to speak. Also, you know, quite often this board often operates as a quasi judicial board and this, this is that case. We will serve as that in that manner in today's public hearing. So with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Julie Olander for a presentation. Ms. Olander, are you with us?
I am with you, Chair. Julie Olander with Planning and Building. And I, would you like a PowerPoint presentation?
That would be great, Ms. Olander.
Okay. So as was said, this is an appeal for WTM 20-005 and WSUP 20-0021 for Woodland Village. And there are two appellants, Derek Schopf, who is a resident of Cold Springs, and then also Woodland Village North, which is represented by Garrett Gordon. This is an appeal for the application requesting, oops, sorry. This is appeal for the, for an application that's requesting a tentative map for 111 attached residential lots and then a special use permit, which is required per table 110.302.5.1. And then also for the Cold Springs Area Plan Policy that requires a special use permit to allow up to 14 dwelling units and then also to vary the building placement standards. And as it said, the Cold Springs Area Plan does require a special use permit when you're having multifamily or single family attached residential development and up to 14, up to 14 dwelling units is allowed as long as there is a commercial use on the property. And there is a commercial use existing on this property. It's the Village Green, what's the village, the building that houses the Village Green, the daycare center and a tea shop. And the density is not going to be the, the, the policy allows up to 14 dwelling units. However, this development is going to be a density of 12.9 units for the site. And just to get a lay of the land, you can see where the Village Green building is and then the parcel it's on is where the housing is proposed to do is going to be located. And then you also see where the Family Center is, which is a building that is on the adjacent parcel where there are going to be some development also there. And then you can see the park and then Cold Springs Middle School to the north. Just to point out the change on the building placement standards, typically this is a property that's zone neighborhood commercial, so and it's bold, I bolded the neighborhood commercial. So typically it'd be 15 feet front setback and they're asking for an eight foot. And then the rear and the side, they're asking for a zero where it would have been 20 and five. And this is really to accommodate these attached housing. And then the minimum lot size, again, these are smaller units, so the lot will be taken up by, primarily by the dwelling itself. They're asking for 800 square feet, which would typically be 10,000. And then the width is going from 75 feet to 16. The height of the buildings that Woodland Village is proposing are going to be two to three story and neighborhood commercial would allow up to 60 feet. So those are the changes they're looking for, for the building placement standards. And just to remind everybody, Woodland Village was planned to have a town center and that's what they're proposing to do in this area. These buildings, as I said, are going to be two to three stories high. The buildings will have two to 10 units in each building and the units will have two to three bedrooms. Buildings will be alley loaded with either a one or two car garage and with a majority having a 20-foot long driveway to accommodate other vehicles. Here's just a architectural look of what the applicant has presented, has in their application showing what these buildings are going to propose to look, be looking like. As I said, the applicant indicates that there will be 111 attached single family units. These units will be more affordable and will provide an alternative to the typical type of single family housing that you find in that area. And the area, though the development will be primarily residential, the applicant is open to adding more commercial in the future if there is a demand. Concerning water and sewer, the water is provided by Great Basin Water Company and the sewer is from the county. These services have been in place for this area. The infrastructure has been somewhat laid out, if not already developed. There are going to be several access points to the development from Village Parkway and to provide some different access points to disperse the traffic. The main access will be at the intersection of Rockland Drive and Village Parkway. And then the access for the Village, the Family Center is going to be moved, but they aren't anticipating that that will have any adverse impacts. And also the developer is providing street and off, off-street parking, which will be privately owned and maintained by the development. So all the streets and the parking areas are going to be developed, maintained by the development. The project is anticipating about 851 average daily trips with 61 AMP tricks and 71 PMP trip, P, peak trip hours. The staff study does recommend that the applicant provides mechanisms to impact the, the traffic impacts to the areas and, which includes striping, signage, crosswalks and turn lanes. Also, the development is proposed to go to the three local schools in that area, which are Inskip, Cold Springs Middle School and the Spanish High School, Spanish Springs High School. And originally during the planning commission meeting, the numbers I had received from the school district had showed that there were going to be 14. They are anticipating this development would have about 14 elementary schools, students, seven middle school students and then seven high school students. However, there was some questions about that at the planning commission by various people, including one of the commissioners. So I reached out to the school district again and asked them to really look at this again. They had some changes because they had looked at it one way being with residential anyway, they changed it, they reassessed it to, they anticipate the development will have about 22 elementary students, 12 middle school students and then 11 high school students. And here's just a layout of showing what they anticipate at the different schools. I wanted to focus in on this because it did come up at the planning commission meeting. And it does show that North Valley High School is going to be at capacity in the 2029, 20 year, well, really from 2021 on to the, up to 2020. However, the school district is anticipating that with Stonegate, there might be some, a new high school located at that development as that development comes online. And then they're also anticipating that the, the populations are going to shift around once Hug High School opens as a career and technical academy and then also with the new Hug High School. So there's some shifts at the high school level that the school district is anticipating. This was presented to the North Valley Cabs, Cab on December 14th and they had comments concerning traffic on US 3995, available infrastructure and then bus service. I want to point out that property owners in the area were noticed from about 550, 500 feet from the site, which 77 property owners were noticed. And then it was, this application did go out to a variety of agencies and departments and there were no recommendations for denial. These are the 10 tentative subdivision map findings that you'll have to make to approve this application. And then there's five special use permit findings. And I did provide the possible motions in your staff report. I'm available for questions and I know, as I stated earlier, the appellants are both available here and have presentations.
Thank you, Ms. Olander. Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Olander, can you go back to, I think it's your slide, I think it's 13, but it might be 12. I'm sorry, I glanced away and.
Let's go back up.
Right, no, go, it was one Spanish Springs, right there. The proposed development is zoned for Inskip Elementary School, Cold Springs Middle School and Spanish Springs High School. That, that must be a typographical error.
I think it is. I'm sorry, apologize for that. It should be North Valleys.
North Valleys High School.
As shown on this, yeah.
Okay, all right, as shown on this, right. I just, I wanted to, because there was some differences, some incongruity between the two slides and I, I wouldn't.
I apologize for that, Commissioner.
If you would want to try to get them all the way over to Spanish Springs High School, you'd be, you'd be better off trying to get them down to the new Hug High School. That would be much easier. So, okay, all right.
Oh, great.
That was, that was my only question. I apologize.
Okay, sorry for that mistake.
No, no, it's, it's all good. I just wanted to make sure that it, that it was just a typographical error and not genuinely what was intended.
Yeah, I, I, it was a typographic error.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thanks, Ms. Olander. Is there any further questions for, for planning staff? Commissioner Jung, do you have any questions?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. No, I don't. I, I don't have any problem with this development. I've heard fellow neighbors' feedback and I, I want to put on the record and it's not trying to go after any particular board of permission, but it appears to me that it's become pro forma now in Washoe County for the planning commission to vote no. And every developer in town knows they're always going to have to come to the board of commissioners, which is not helpful and not performing at the level that this commissioner would like to see the planning commission perform and has done something I've been asking for help with. I know that the chair and the management team have been working diligently on this. This is not something that happens overnight, fully aware of that. But I just wanted to state on the record, I support this project. I think one of the luckiest things in the world is when you have people that actually live in a development and they're the developer because they have a different responsibility to the people than does a developer who lives far out of the neighborhood or most likely in our circumstances, aren't even from the community, the state or this area. And I'm looking at you, Southern California. And so I just, I want to say, these are the kind of people I'd like to grow in my community because I think they're accountable in a whole different way than even us as policymakers can be accountable to the citizens who choose to make probably one of their biggest investments in their life. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung, for, for that. Seen no, seen no other questions for staff. As, as usual, what we allow in these appeals is for the appellants both to have an opportunity to speak. You both get 10 minutes to share your thoughts and your appeal with the board for consideration and then we'll go to public comment after. So first I have up is, the first appellant is Derek Schopf, the resident of Cold Springs. Mr. Schopf, if you'll come up and present.
I have some time to set up first, please.
Mr. Schopf, you need the, you said you wanted the overhead?
No, I, I just want to get my paperwork out.
Oh, no, that's fine.
Before the clock starts to all.
Yeah, that's fine.
No problem.
If you need the overhead, that little white space to your right there, if you want to, if there was anything you needed to present.
Got you, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Okay, I'm ready. Hello, my name is Derek Schef and I live in Cold Springs. I would like to thank the commissioners for hearing my plea. I am not a lawyer. I do not have a staff of paralegals where they are to gather their data and prepare a PowerPoint for me. My children are grown, so I don't even have them to do it for me. I am a concerned citizen using basic tools and common sense standing in front of you to overturn the planning commission approval of Woodland Village Town Center WTM 20-005 and WSUP 20-0021. They're asking to change the setbacks. Setbacks are put in place for safety, privacy and environmental protection. Currently, I'm going to read off the Kern County setbacks. The numbers are going to read front, side and rear. Mid, middle density, a medium density, sorry, medium density rural, 30, 15, 30. High density rural, 30, 15, 30. Medium density suburban, 20, 8, 20. High density suburban, 20, 5, 20. Medium density urban, 15, 20, I'm sorry, 15, 5, 20. High density urban, 20, 5, 20. Woodland Village Town Center, 8, 0, 0, 8, 0, 0. The closest was medium density urban at 15, 5, 20. The town center is being placed on a curve over here. And you can see in the parking lot where some of that zero back is going to be, it's going to be right in the parking lot area.
Mr. Schopf, if you use that, that little, this, just place the piece of paper right there.
Oh.
Face up, just face up towards you.
Oh, awesome.
And it'll show up on the thing and you can kind of, there you go for orientation. Now you can point us all out.
Is that better for you guys?
That's perfect.
Like that?
Other way. There you go, right there.
Okay. All right, as you can see, you know, the zero setbacks are in there. Monday morning, when I was driving to work, I noticed that there was a fire engine on the side of Woodland, Woodland Village, or Village Parkway, sorry, Village Parkway, right by Mud Springs. Came up upon it and then I saw that there was a car in the ditch approximately 15 feet from the road. This happens often in our, in our area. If this was near this curve over here, it could have gone into a house. By eliminating the setbacks, we are putting people's, by eliminating setbacks, we are putting people's lives in danger and at risk. Therefore, I am asking the commission to accept our appeal and deny Woodland Town Center for this reason. They're proposing. They're proposing a three-story structure. Eric Hasty, um, applicant representative, stated, "Architecture will be designed to blend with surrounding structures. Nowhere in the North Valleys are there any residential three-story structures, let alone Cold Springs. How is it going to blend if it's the only three-story structure around?" I talked with one of our local firemen because I was curious about how is a three-story structure going to affect the fire and everything that's going on with the, the area. He said they, they can fight a three-story structure. They have two engines. They have one water cannon that will reach the three-story structure, one water cannon. And to get up, to save anyone's lives, if they have to go up there, they will be using extension ladders. Extension ladders, little extension ladders pushing up, which our firemen, they're great people, and they're trained to do this, but it's more difficult to do your job when you don't have adequate tools to do it. With the high winds that Cold Springs experiences, a three-story structure catching on fire is going to have a better chance of spreading surrounding buildings with the wind and other homes. And when I talked to the fireman, he also mentioned to me that the nearest ladder truck is approximately thirty minutes away in good weather. And there's a big hump on three ninety-five that they'd have to travel over that in inclement weather may be an issue. Not only is there no way that a three-story structure is going to blend in, if this, if this building catches fires, winds in Cold Springs, there's a greater chance of spreading to other buildings, and for this reason, I am asking the commission to accept my appeal and deny Woodland Village Town Center. They have a traffic study. I have some things highlighted. Um, Commissioner Donchuk stated she is always worried about traffic concerns, and there were some questions from RTC that were brought up, and Ms. Olander referred to the applicant and his engineer, Paul Solgeti. I'm going to call him Paul because I can't pronounce his last name, I apologize, Mr. Paul. Um, they referred to the, the engineer. To me, isn't this like the farmer asking the fox, "Is my henhouse secure?" Now, Paul said that he's expecting, we're going to go back to this one, that he's expecting, he's expecting seventy percent to travel down Aqua Moraine and then to Crystal Canyon. Seventy percent of the p, traffic's going to go that way, and then thirty percent is going to go through Woodland Village, that's over here. Now, when you look at it, and he said, he stated that the RTC wondered about his logic. And, but he kind of shored us up, gave us confidence in his logic because he said he has engineering evidence that distribution was accurate. So his engineering evidence is going to say that this is accurate. So approximately, I'm going to, seventy percent will say is right about there. If you lived over here, you're going to pass up this exit to, um, Village Parkway, and you're going to drive through the parking lot. Because driving through parking lots, I don't know if any of you've lived in apartment buildings, but my goal when I lived in an apartment building was not to drive through the parking lot. It was to get out of the parking lot as soon as possible. So we'll drive through the parking lot, we'll pass up this exit to Woodland Parkway, and then we're either going to go through this road here where we have a ginormous speed bump, and then get to our, to Aqua Moraine, which has another speed bump. Or we can continue driving through the parking lot and get out through this exit over here. Seventy percent of the people, he says, are going to do that. Me and my neighbors, we didn't really follow that logic. We did our own study of traffic. Blair Speth, gentleman over there, he spent two days gathering data on Woodland Parkway. He, he had a little counter, like we said, we're low tech, had a little hand counter and countered up the traffic. We had five thousand five hundred eighty-five cars. I'm going to have to speed it up because I have two minutes left. Three ninety-five to Tom, to the town center is, like it says, two-point-six miles, and the time travel is five oh nine. Three ninety-five to town center, Crystal Canyon, is seven-point-two, three-point-eight miles in, uh, seven minutes and twenty-two seconds. With the three exits, it's longer. How can seventy percent of the people be expected to go out that way? And also, when you, things residents know that others might not know, when you go down Crystal Canyon, it's like continuous speed bumps because there's cracks all along the road. It is not a well-paved road. And then you come to White Lake, and you have an uncontrolled intersection that has backups from times, because I used to travel that way and decided not to anymore, that would have backups of five to ten minutes waiting to turn left to get to three ninety-five. But according to his study, seventy percent of the people will travel that way because he has engineering evidence. So for this reason, with the RTC sees, saw faulty logic, and the people of Cold Springs also feel that the traffic study is faulty. For this reason, we are asking you to accept our appeal and to deny Woodland Village Town Center. Now, I'm running out of time, but I had infrastructure as my last thing. The roads are dangerous out, out in Woodland Village. There has been many accidents. We have the list here. Sorry, trying to speed up a little bit. Um, people pass all the time on double, not only on double yellows in twenty-five mile-an-hour zones, but on four yellows. I had an FJ, I was traveling Woodland Village going to three ninety-five. I was traveling between twenty-five and thirty, which is speeding, but at a decent, slow rate. He came up on my tail, followed me to the curve where it goes up to thirty-five. I accelerated to thirty-five to forty, still speeding, but he went and passed me in a blind area where you can only see a hundred feet in front of you, and he passes me, pack, going over double yellow lines, two sets of yellow lines. This is often, I told him the story to other people, happens all the time in our village. So I'm asking for roadways to be widened, intersections, I would tell you which intersections I believe should be four. If I could have maybe an extension?
No, sorry, sir, we just, it's ten minutes, we're done. I, I appreciate your op, uh, thank you for...
Hearing me? I appreciate all your time.
Thank you. And, Mr. Schopf, if you'll submit, um, your, some of your presentations to the, so they can put it on the record for you.
Oh, perfect, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, uh, appellant I have is, um, uh, I believe Garrett Gordon, um, signed in to, uh, on behalf of the other appellant. Mr. Gordon, you have ten minutes, um, to preside, produce your appeal for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Garrett Gordon, today representing Lifestyle Homes. Nice to see all of you in person, it's been a little while. Um, I have a presentation today, I'll, I'll go quickly. Um, also on the call or on Zoom is Eric Hasty, our planner from Wood Rogers, and also Paul Solagie, our traffic engineer, for any questions. Of course, this is Woodland Village Town Center, uh, about ten acres, located in the heart of, of Woodland Village and the Cold Springs area plan. This is infill development, mostly vacant. Um, there's currently the Village Grill, Cold Springs Family Center. Within the Cold Springs Family Center, um, there's currently a daycare, currently a, a tea shop, a true town center that has always been contemplated to have some additional density and some attached product right in the town square area. The zoning for this, uh, property was approved by the planning commission unanimously, and also this board unanimously back in twenty-twenty, again, anticipating that this attached town host product will be coming with a tentative map, uh, this year. Uh, the master plan is commercial and suburban residential, and the zoning is NC, which only allows for an attached product, which is why we're here today with a special use permit. Requesting again, uh, two special use permits. One, uh, the Cold Springs area plan, of course, allows you to go up to fourteen units per acre with a use permit. Uh, we're below that fourteen acres, we're not trying to push the limit, uh, we're in the eleven to twelve unit per acre range. Uh, also a special use permit to minimize or to modify the, um, the setbacks. And why is that? Because with an attached product, the building actually goes to the property line. So if you're buying a townhouse, you buy the structure, and you buy the parcel, but it goes to the property line. That, that, the excess is all common area that goes to the HOA. So you have to do the setbacks in order to get the attached product that's required in NC zoning. And a tentative map for a hundred and eleven, um, single-family, uh, attached units. So here's the tentative map which you've seen, a hundred and eleven townhomes, mixed-use development. Again, Cold Springs Family Center, the park, the Village Grill, just a very traditional, uh, true town center that has been visualized and now implemented by, uh, the listener and family. Uh, setbacks I mentioned are required for the attached product. Trails will provide connectivity to park and surrounding neighborhoods. Architecture you heard will be designed to blend in with the neighborhood, there'll be strict CCNRs on the property to ensure compliance. Step-two and three-story buildings to match the existing neighborhood. We heard a minute ago about the three-story. Uh, as I understand it, our three-story could be in the range of forty or fifty feet when sixty feet is allowed. So we're not trying to push the envelope, go all the way up to the maximum height, will be well below the height. As I understand it, most will be one and two stories anyway, but depending on the buyer, potentially a, a three-story, um, structure. Uh, continued pedestrian connectivity throughout the project. Parking will not be reduced, we're actually overparked, which is extremely important, not only for the, the residential units, but for the Village Grill and the, and the Family Center. Uh, you've heard about, about traffic, um, we are going to implement, uh, at staff's recommendation, and so, and, and our traffic engineer, um, recommendation, um, some additional crosswalks, some flashing lights, some additional signage. Again, that will mitigate, uh, in our view, a, a kind of minimal, uh, number of trips during the peak hour. So the policy, again, the findings are always important. Um, the findings here, um, right out of the Cold Springs area plan, multifamily and single-family attached are allowed up to fourteen units per acre with a use permit. That's why we're here today. You saw, I would say, a very glowing, a recommendation of approval by staff. Uh, we certainly meet the land use and transportation elements, the housing elements, um, this type of development is encouraged in these town centers. Um, staff has confirmed that all legal findings, consistency, site suitability, availability of service has been met. And it's probably been a little while since I've been before you with, uh, a three out of three. We have a staff recommendation of approval, we have a unanimous cab recommendation of approval, and we have a planning commission recommendation of approval. So every step of the way and with this project has been, has been approved. Appeal, uh, briefly, just for the record, uh, there's four or five appealable issues I wanted to address. Um, number of homes, there was concern about the density, uh, year loot, Cold Springs plan encourages mixed-use and multifamily development, this is exactly that, that product. Uh, this policy is important. I know the many of, many of you and the public, given, uh, the housing shortage we've been going through, uh, policy seven-point-four promotes home ownership as a community asset. All of you know that lifestyle does a phenomenal product, uh, they're now trying to move forward with even more affordable kind of workforce housing units that will be really important to this town center, um, as well as, you know, as the listeners have indicated to me, um, some, some folks are, are growing older and, um, in their senior lives, they don't want to take care of their yard anymore, and are looking for a different product so they could kind of downsize but stay out in this community that they love. Um, again, allows up to fourteen units per acre, uh, we're at eleven to twelve, uh, units, um, when you look at the gross calculations. Uh, decreasing the setbacks, again, you have to have that for the product. As staff said, this site is flat, vacant, certainly suitable for this product. Uh, the tentative map meets all density, lot sizes, and open space criteria. Another appeal will issue was, uh, the comment was congruent of existing homes in the development. Again, this project is within the suburban character management area, exactly where this type of product should be. Mixed use highly encouraged, particularly within this town center. Uh, this should provide, uh, keep stressing that policy seven-point-four, provide more opportunities for home ownership, this is exactly that. And again, minimal impact in this type of development plan for this area. This has been planned, we went through the zoning process, and we're finally here with a map. Infrastructure, I just took a quote right from the staff report, "There are adequate improvements existing on the site that will adequately serve the proposed uses. This type of development has been planned for and anticipated at this location. Although the proposed product was reviewed by relevant agencies and any needed conditions concerning facilities have been included." I went back and looked when I heard a comment about kind of the fire department, um, again, staff's recommending approval, uh, that would include, um, all agency comments. And there's, just like any tentative map, a good three, four pages of, of trucking metal's fire protection conditions that we'll have to comply with, uh, in order to move the development forward. And finally, a number of students, you saw the data provided, and, um, Mr. Vice Chair, that was a good catch, uh, in fact, it will be the North Valleys High School. So we're happy, ha, happy to answer any questions. Again, uh, staff recommended approval, cab recommended approval, planning commission recommended approval, so we respectfully request you, um, approve this project and move it forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett. Um, all right, we've heard, uh, from both the, both appellants and, and staff now. Um, before we move, uh, into any questions, I wanted to open up to public comment, um, and we have a number of individuals signed in for public comment. So Madam Clerk, will you please call public comment?
In chambers, we have Mr. Blair Speth signed in.
Welcome, Mr. Speth.
Hello. I want to thank, uh, Commissioner Herman for, uh, assuring me that I would be welcome to participate in this. And I have quite a few things, I actually wanted to speak during public comment to open, but I didn't know you had to sign up for three and sixteen. So if you would grant me a few extra minutes, I'd appreciate that. Um, I heard the report from the applicant here, and, um, with all their, all their gleaming recommendations from the commissions they've been through, but I don't think that the process was fair. Um, all this business being conducted during a pandemic makes it really hard for local residents and, you know, people to get together and talk, you know? There's a lot of fear around, there's a lot of people that just don't want people knocking on their doors, you know? I think we could have done a lot better job to organize the local residents to, to oppose this. Um, you know, it's a certain kind of person that wants to live in Cold Springs. We like to be around from the hustle and bustle of the city, and in our opinion, this is bringing more hustle and bustle of the city to Cold Springs. When I emailed the system advisory board on ten-eleven, uh, the Friday before the meeting, I wanted to ask them if they were going to take public comment. Uh, the email will be back on the fifteenth, the day after the meeting. I want to point out, you know, since we do have traffic concerns with this, that there was a fatality the day that the cab voted to approve this project. It was at, uh, White Lake Parkway and Crystal Canyon, involving school buses with kids on it. So, uh, in the email from the cab, I was assured that the planning commission would take into account our comments. However, the planning commission went on the cab's recommendation solely, you know, it didn't seem like that they took much input from the comments that were made during the county, the, uh, commissioners' meeting. Uh, even one of the commissioners asked why the new zoning change shouldn't be considered a bait and switch after the zoning was changed on four-twenty. And Pat Phillips remarked how attached housing was not her idea of mixed use in a place where the community would gather. We're, we're being, this is being billed as a true town center. Well, one restaurant, one gym, and two small, uh, commercial units, you know, about six-hundred square feet each, doesn't, to me, feel like a place where people are going to go and want to talk to their neighbors. And then neither of these comments during the, uh, planning commission meeting spurt, sparked further discussion throughout the commission or was, uh, further public comment asked for. It almost seemed that it was, uh, a slight inconvenience to have to actually hold a vote, hold a vote on that, um, as Commissioner Chesney just assumed that everyone was going to vote in favor.
Mr. Speth?
Yep.
I, I need you to, to wrap up your comments, and you'll have an opportunity in the final public comment, uh, of the meeting to, to, to address that, that you didn't get in, uh, on this item, okay?
Okay, that sounds good. I'm, I'm through this part, and I just do have some more comments about...
Sir, no, I, your time is expired for now. You can, you'll be able to, you'll be able to end the final public comment, okay?
Okay.
You've got another three minutes, okay?
Um, next up in chambers, we have Mr. Kenji Otto.
Welcome, Mr. Otto.
Thank you, and, uh, good afternoon. Um, I'm a resident of Cold Springs and, uh, been there for, uh, over a decade now, and, um, yes, we have, uh, issues with traffic I've been trying to address for pretty much all the time I've been there. Um, we have, um, a, uh, rote, route, um, uh, that goes over the hill, we got two of them, that, uh, the county doesn't seem to want to, to do anything with, or, and we also have people that don't want to do anything, it, have it done with because they keep on saying that it's, uh, it's just going to bring more traffic into the area. And we also have people that don't want to do anything, have it done with because they keep on saying that it's just going to bring more traffic into the area. Well, people keep moving into the into the valley and they keep saying they want to try to get away from Reno and the big city, which I agree with and I heartily agree with Derek and Blair. And but the other thing is that this came up a couple of years ago when I was on the cab, this project. And so I I'm very familiar with it and I'm very much for it. I do disagree with anything that goes over two stories. So I'm a little bit conflicted between the two gentlemen and Woodland Village. I don't live in Woodland Village, okay? I live outside of Woodland Village. So I'm not in the HOA, would never be in an HOA, but that's my my choice. You know, if if they want to live in an HOA, great. But the fact of the matter is now as far as the traffic, I live off Crystal Canyon Boulevard and I've been trying to get stop signs on it. I would love to get stop signs on it. I've already helped a number of individuals with vehicle accidents. This is the first accident where there's a death on at that particular point. But along White Lake, there's been several deaths. But that's not the cause of the people, the the development. That's the cause of the people who are ignorant, selfish and not law abiding, okay? And it's kind of the problem, the 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 issue of the county not trying to help the Cold Springs with their traffic issues and ignoring us and having the roads people tell me that five people have to die in order for them to fix the problem, okay? So that needs to stop. But again, I I I've been for this project, but the only issue again is the three stories. Two stories, great. From, I walk the hills all the time, it'll look great if it's two stories. And I and I don't think they're going to do three stories, to be honest with you, because it's it's not going to be the kind of people that are going to want to live there. Young, young people and seniors and all, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Otto.
Now we'll switch to Zoom and we have Lane Wright signed in.
All right. Lane? You have, you have to unmute. Lane, can you hear us? You're still muted. Is there a way for you to unmute your mic? All right, wait, maybe. Okay, we'll we'll hold Ms. Wright in queue and we're going to move on to the next one and hopefully we can rectify that, the audio challenges for her. Let's move to the next speaker.
Next up, we have Naomi Johnson via Zoom.
Ms. Johnson. Ms. Johnson, can you unmute your microphone now?
Okay, can you hear me? Perfect, thank you, Naomi Johnson, for the record. I am a homeowner. I live approximately a half a block away from where the entrance to this development is going to be. My husband bought the property when it was built in two thousand and six. And the reason he purchased it here and why we kept it in two thousand and eight when we got married was because of the single family character of the neighborhood. When he bought the house, there was originally supposed to be one acre and five acre ranchettes and an equestrian center. And, you know, that all fell by the wayside and when the recession hit. But never, you know, we've heard that this was always planned for and anticipated. And, you know, that's not what we were hearing. This was supposed to be a village center. It was supposed to have shops and restaurants and, you know, a place for us to gather. And and we provided comment via email to the planning commission. You know, the thing that we got from them from them said just was what yours does and that they would make reasonable efforts to include comment received by email and voicemail. And they did none of that. They pushed it through. They had a discussion for about twenty minutes. And then the head of the planning commission's words were, well, let's quit beating a dead horse and vote on this. And there were only, I believe, four people that were that joined via the Zoom call. I'm sure there were more that liked to be, but if you look at the map that where they showed the the people that were contacted, there were seventy seven owners that were contacted and very few of them are residential. There were, I saw one big, huge chunk of vacant land. Well, I don't think, I don't think that enough effort went into contacting people who are going to be affected because there are going to be a heck of a lot more people than the seventy seven owners that were contacted that are going to be affected by the traffic, by the fact that we aren't going to have the shops and restaurants that we, you know, envisioned at some point. And everything that this, you know, the fact that we have to now, I can't see, I won't be able to see the mountains if there's a three story building. You know, I have one house to look over and then I'm looking at at where this development is going to be. And I just don't think that enough care and effort went into really reaching out to the people around this area.
Thank you, we do appreciate it. Next, next on Zoom.
Next on Zoom, we have Diana Smith.
Ms. Smith?
Yes, hello, thank you for taking my comments today. I'm a residential appraiser for a living and I I noticed that you guys only notified people that lived within five hundred feet of this project. Well, I back Village Parkway and I looked at the traffic survey there and I agree that most people are going to come down Village Parkway because it's going to be the fastest, easiest way of egress out of this development. And when they said that there's going to be eight hundred and fifty one vehicles on Village Parkway or or eight hundred and fifty one new new vehicles due to this, I I wondered what the impact was going to be. I specifically identified a hundred and fifteen hot, single family homes that back Village Parkway that if they took the egress more towards the casino up there, that they would be coming back behind me. And what does that do? Well, it creates road noise. And what does road noise do to a property? It lowers a property's value. Even FHA, VA, everyone recognizes it that's in the market. And they even ask you as an appraiser, well, you got to look at the road noise. So I wanted to be a little bit unbiased. I went out and I put up a poll of appraisers. I polled fifty three appraisers and I had a seventy percent response on that. And they all said, um, the, well, I'm sorry, I did a poll and almost all of them responded that it would create a negative impact upon my property value if I was impacted by this road noise. So it's like when they say that there's no, was no impact to the existing homeowners, there is. And they never sent notices out to us out here in Cold Springs. So I I, from the very beginning, your five hundred foot notice, people within five hundred feet only think that would have an impact only on those people. It it impacts all of us. Our roads out here going out to the highway from Village Parkway is not built to take that extra traffic. We have a lot of problems in the winter time, people are always in the ditch. And I don't think that was addressed. In your traffic study, it was not addressed specifically of how much more traffic was going to be on behind my house from the Village Parkway down to New Forest. So I think we were just left out of the loop. I've been here since two thousand and two. And when the builder first originally built here, he was talking about what he was going to build up there was he was going to be putting a pole in and other commercial properties for all of us to enjoy that thing. Now it looks like they just are using the park for their.
Thank you, Ms. Smith, do appreciate your comments.
It looks like Lane Lane Wright is back on Zoom.
Okay. Ms. Wright? Can you hear us now?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. So my name is Kristen Wright. I have lived in Cold Springs since nineteen eighty seven. I was actually born and raised out there. The way the valley is going not only is completely saddening to me, it's it's just gone downhill, but that's beside the point. My worry about this new development is mainly the traffic. I mean, we have a two lane freeway that I don't know if any of you tried to come into town from there today, but took me an hour and a half to get from Cold Springs to where I work at Par Boulevard. So you have a two lane road or freeway. The only other way to really go is Old Three ninety five, which is one lane. So now you're going to add more houses, more people, and that's what we have to get into town. That right there is ridiculous. My second issue, I live on Georgetown Drive. I have tried to talk to the county, I've also tried to talk to lifestyles about what they can do on Georgetown. We've had three homes run into. I've had my fence taken out, my neighbors have had their fences taken out, we've had cars hit, people go down our street at sixty miles an hour. My kids can't play outside because they're going to die. There's no way I'll even let them in my front yard. I had to move their table from my living room from the front window to another room because I'm worried about a car coming through my front window. But Lifestyle doesn't care about that. All they care about is building houses. They don't care about the safety concerns that us residents actually have. When we go to them with safety concerns, it doesn't matter to them. It also doesn't matter to the county. They don't care that I'm worried that somebody is going to come through my window, even though it's happened three times on our street. So now they're going to add all of these houses or these condos, they're going to add it right on the curve. There's going to be more accidents and Lifestyle and the county aren't going to do anything about it. You're putting people at risk. You're adding all of these houses, these cars, these people with no concern for the safety of anybody. Also, you have the park. We were excited to use the park, my kids love to use the park. There's no way I'm taking my kids to the park with those new buildings there. There's going to be nowhere to park, it's not going to be safe. You have all of these people around, it's just ridiculous, you're ruining the valley. And the sad thing is that Lifestyle doesn't care. So I really think you need to take into consideration the people that live out there, the people who have grown up out there and have chosen to stay and raise our families out there, who now want to leave because Lifestyle is ruining this valley with what they want to do. That's just my two cents on it. I really think you just need to listen to the residents and not the people who are only worried about making money and don't care about the people they're building houses for. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wright.
Actually, her name was Kristen as she's signed on, but I'd like to get her last name.
Oh, it is, right.
Kristen Wright, thank you.
All right.
Yes, I'm sorry, my son uses this for Zoom.
Thank you, we appreciate it, Ms. Wright. All right. And that concludes our public comment. We do have emails, Madam Clerk.
We do have emails and I can read the names.
Please read the names of those that have. Sir, sir, are you, I know you signed in again, but you do not get an additional three minutes. You got ten minutes in your your appeal, sir. No, sir, I I understand what, that's not how it works. I'm sorry, I'm very sorry, you got your ten minutes for your appeal. You got more than any of the other public comment too, okay? Sorry about that.
So we have emails either with concern or opposition for James and Angela Rains, Wendy Morley, Jennifer Craig, Tracy and Jerry Vasina, Emily Peca, I J Kraus, Danielle Rayner, Stacy Dynan, Rebecca Marco and an additional voicemail from Emily Peca.
Okay, thank you.
They will be placed on the record.
All right, we will close public comment and bring it back to the board. Now I'm going to open it up for commissioners to have questions of the appellant. Both appellants have the opportunity to respond to any questions. Vice Chair Hartung.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Mr. Gordon or either Mr. Listeners? The the, what's the, what's the timeframe for build out? Do we, do we know on this approximately? Actually, let me, let me back up. Let me, let me, let me ask a different question first. These are all, these are all build essentially build to suit. So in other words, you don't build it until somebody buys it. Am I correct in that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Hartung. We typically do both.
Sir, sir, can you state your name for the record?
Uh, sorry, Peter Listener, Lifestyle Homes, the applicant. We typically do both, some spec and some build to suit. Our typical program is we just keep our employees working, period. And if there's a unit that isn't sold, we may have put a discount on it. But as you know, with the housing market the way it is, there's a need for housing, especially housing like we're doing, what what we're planning here, which will be more affordable.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to ask Mr. Gordon a question if I may, Mr. Listener. And you already, you already basically stated this, townhomes not apartments. So these are, this is not a standard apartment complex. On your project details page, Mr. Gordon, it listed four hundred and ten parking spaces on your, on the presentation. And it didn't have, I'm sorry, it didn't have a a number on your, it was on your, on your PowerPoint.
Okay, thank you, for the record, Garrett Gordon. Okay, I think I'm tracking you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Because I don't have yours, I have, I have our staff's, but I don't have yours.
Yeah, if I'm, again, for the record, Garrett Gordon, if I'm looking at.
Project details page, Garrett.
Correct.
Okay. Four hundred and ten spaces was listed on that page, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do these each have a garage associated with each, does each unit have a garage associated with it?
Yes, they do. We anticipate two parking spaces per garage.
Okay, so a two car garage as well?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, all right.
Let me clarify for the record, I apologize. There's a garage on every unit and we anticipate it fitting one vehicle per unit.
Oh, one vehicle per unit.
Bob Listener, part of the applicant team. We're required to have one parking space per bedroom, I believe is the code, I believe. And we accomplish that with a two car garage or a one car garage and a one car driveway or in most cases, a two car garage and a two car driveway. We are also required to have additional parking for the two commercial uses, the family center and the the Village Grill building. And we think that this parking will be used at different times of day. So we actually think, I personally think we're putting in too much parking.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to politely disagree with you. I've I've never, I've never encountered too much parking in my, some sixty plus years on this earth. So don't, don't take that the wrong way, Mr. Listener. I I have, I I'm, it's a joy to pull up and have plenty of parking, I'll just say that. Where will the people that that want to utilize the park, park? And because some won't be able to to walk to the to this. And I, and I know that there's some anticipation that 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 people would, you know, pedestrians or bicyclists and et cetera would would utilize the park. But but if I, if I wanted to go and use the park, where would I park?
The the park has parking.
Okay.
Already. And this is part of the reason that we that we didn't try and reduce the number of parking. They're going to park in this project. They can park on the streets. I'd say we're realistically adding parking for the park. And also, we're, we like the idea, I think the Parks Department likes the idea that there will be quite a few more eyes on the park, which not only is accessible to more people, there are just more people watching it, okay?
And if I can, Mr. Vice Chair, just looking at, there's a great chart on page eight of the planning commission staff report that walks through what the code requires and what Woodland Village provides.
Yes, no, no, I understand.
And so we're eighty nine spaces overparked, which I think helps with park parking as well. But to your point, it's better to be overparked than certainly underparked.
Yeah, no, I I I saw that, but but it's, it's, it's always a question as to sort of how everything's going to, going to dovetail together. Sorry, Mr. Gordon, question for the listeners. What what is, what do you anticipate, what do you anticipate the the? Sorry, Mr. Gordon, question for the listeners. What, what is, what do you anticipate, what do you anticipate the, the time of build-out? I mean, if, if, i- if, if all things go as planned, which never happen, but what, what would you, what would you anticipate the, the time of build-out to be?
For this community or the whole Cold Springs?
No, this community. That's, we're, this is, that's, and, and again, with all due respect, Mr. Listener, that's not what's before us today. What's before us today is, is the application. So I'm, I'm trying to subject my questions to, to that issue. I think that that's only fair.
Well, I'm, I'm guessing is what's gonna happen. We employ about a hundred people, and some of them been with us for, for ten, twenty years. And our job is a very important thing for us is to keep them employed. Some of them, like, not me, of course, are getting kinda old and would be, it would be difficult to find new employment. So we're very focused on keeping our employees working. I'm sorry, I'm giving you the long answer. We build about a hundred homes a year. We have about a hundred to go. And here's a hundred more. So I'm thinking these will be built out in the next two to two and a half years.
Okay, all right. That's, that, that leads me to my next question.
Sorry, I apologize for the long answer.
No, no, it's all right.
But you asked me.
Very, very suitable. If I may, Mr. Chair, I, I, I hope you don't mind. I don't mean to be taking up more time than has been or should be allotted to me. We have this everywhere, and I know you guys, like, I've, I've, I've worked with both of you. Bob, you and I have known each other since the Spanish Springs and Highland Ranch days. So I, I, I'm very familiar with you and, and, and your approach to the community. There's been some, there's been some requests, and I, and I've had these same issues, Mr. Solero, with putting stop signs in certain places. And, and in fact, I've tried to get, as you know, funding from the RTC to accomplish some of these things. But I, I, I'm concerned with the, the stop signs needed on Crystal Canyon. I was concerned with Ms. Wright's comments on Georgetown Drive and some much-needed traffic improvements. I can't condition you to these kinds of things. That's, that's not, because these are, these are, and I won't call them unrelated, but, but they, they're in different places. But my question is, is, is can, can we work out a plan, because I know I've done this in the past with other developers, where as time goes on, they recognize issue, they recognize traffic issues, and, and and it's hard sometimes, with all due respect, Mr. Solero, it's hard sometimes to get our staff to agree. I've wanted to put stop signs on every corner, which will both thrill and anger everyone. But there are some real needed places. I'm not familiar with this place because I don't happen to drive this particular location with any frequency. But would you guys be amenable to dealing with some of this stuff as, and, and I'll, I, I'm happy as, as part of... The, the chairman and I serve on RTC, and so some of these roads lead directly into, to RTC roads. And it, and it sounds to me like the, the, the main Parkway, is it, is it Village Parkway? Is that the name of it? Right, the main Parkway. It sounds to me like, like that really needs to be put on the CIP for RTC to be widened. And, and maybe we can work backwards with that because there, there's, there's gonna be a need in the not-too-distant future as, as all of these areas grow. But would you be amenable to looking at some of these side streets, to making some improvements, to, to counteract some of the issues that are being brought up here?
For the record, Garrett Gordon, absolutely. As you know, Lifestyle Homes has been a great community partner to learn Nevada for decades and happy to meet with you, even maybe invite the appellant here today, and, and some of the folks who came and testified, figure out what those locations are, and how can we potentially fund those stop signs, and working with your staff to make sure they're in the right location. So sign us up for a working group. We're happy to show up.
Okay. All right, last, last question, if I may, Mr. Chair, and then I'll, I'll step down. Mr. Wattsviel, are you online?
Yes, I am. And we also have Ms. Jen, Jennifer Gustafson here as well.
Okay.
Who's been handling this with the county.
Good, okay.
So fire away.
So we have, we have legal, legal on, online. So, so my question is, is on page six of eight of our staff reports, there's some recommendations which we can either affirm or reverse the decision of the, essentially the Planning Commission, although the, the Citizens Advisory Board also made a recommendation of approval as well. Talk to me about lack of standing for a moment, and, and do we, do we actually have an appeal that has standing right now?
So ultimately, whether or not there's standing is a decision that the board is gonna have to make. I can give you kind of a broad overview of, of what standing is. Ultimately, you're gonna have to make a decision based on the facts and the evidence that's before you. Technically, standing is the legal right to bring a challenge, and it's up to each of the appellants to establish that they have standing. And in very broad terms, in order for somebody to have standing, the person needs to be actually and directly harmed by an action. You can't have a hypothetical injury. You have to have some sort of a concrete interest, something, or maybe an injury that is, that's capable of remedy by the board. Courts have a couple of different factors that they look at. They look to see whether or not a plaintiff or an appellant or whoever's bringing an action has suffered an injury in fact. And that means that the person has an injury that's actually legally protected. It has to be something that is concrete and particularized, which is what I was saying before, and it has to be something that's actual or imminent. There also needs to be a causal connection between whatever the claimed injury is and the conduct that's being brought before the board. And it has to be likely, not just speculative, that a favorable decision by the board will actually redress the injury. Specific to this situation, Chapter Two Seventy-Eight limits appeals of Planning Commission decisions to aggrieved persons. But there's not really a definition within Chapter Two Seventy-Eight. That was left to the individual local governments to pass laws and ordinances defining what that is. And your staff report recites that you have Washoe County Code, Section One Ten Point Nine One Zero Point Zero Two, which defines an aggrieved person. And it says, "A person or an entity who has suffered a substantial grievance, not merely a party who is dissatisfied with the decision, in the form of either, A, the denial of or substantial injury to a personal or property right, or the imposition of an illegal, unjust, or inequitable burden or obligation by an enforcement official, the Board of Adjustment, or an administrative hearing officer." So that's more specific to the county. To try and give you a little bit more guidance, there's also been cases from the Nevada Supreme Court. And in one case, the court held that there was no standing to appeal a Planning Commission's approval of a special use permit for a check cashing business that was more than three hundred feet from the business, and where the appellant stated that the basis of the appeal was an oversaturation of similar businesses in the area. The distance issue stemmed from an ordinance requiring that notice to property owners within three hundred feet of the property at issue. There was an ordinance that specifically said that those are the people who are entitled to notice. And Washoe County has a similar provision. It has One Ten Point Six Oh Eight Point One Six, which says that written notice has to be given to property owners within five hundred feet of the property seeking whatever, whatever, whatever the affected property is. So it's fair to say that people who are, who have property within that five hundred feet more than likely have standing. It follows that the farther that somebody is from that five hundred-foot distance, it's, it's gonna be less likely that somebody who's farther out has standing. It doesn't mean that only people within five hundred feet, though, are going to have standing. And in fact, the Nevada Supreme Court has held that residents who live in close proximity to a proposed land use have standing. And, you know, I bring up, I bring up distance specifically because it's addressed in the ordinances and because it's addressed in the cases. It's just one of the factors, you know, like I said before, it's really fact-dependent analysis. There isn't a bright line. And ultimately, you have to decide whether or not either of the appellants provided evidence that demonstrates the denial of or substantial injury to a personal or a property right. And if so, then the appellants have standing.
Okay.
They don't.
Okay. That was a lawyerly explanation. Thank you, Mr. Wattsviel. It was good.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, for indulging me.
Commissioner Herman, I'll have you sign in next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have about five questions for the listener family. I, I know that I have talked about having affordable housing. And it, it has gotten to the point where, you know, that's just kinda almost a sickness or something. But anyhow, people, just like your representative there. He commented about, about that very much. So, yeah, that's what you're trying to do. I know that. That, that is what your intent is with this project. And so, in, in the paperwork, because I read every page, there was a place where it said that they weren't affordable housing. But everything else seems to lead to the fact that they are supposedly. What I have, the first question I have is, what would be your, if you had them built today and they were going on the market, would you, what would you say would be your lowest, like, two-bedroom one, and what would be your highest one?
For the record, Garrett Gordon, Commissioner, thank you for the question. So that word, just to clear, you know, for the definition of affordable, right? This isn't kind of an affordable kind of HUD project, right? But it's affordability, workforce housing affordability, different products out in the Cold Springs area plan. So in talking to Mr. Listener, he envisions that these units would sell for in the low three hundreds for between one thousand and nineteen hundred square foot townhouse.
What would the lowest one be?
I believe in the low three hundreds, right? You wanna answer that question, Peter?
Commissioner Herman, our, our real goal is to be around three hundred. However, and that would be for the smallest one. However, you know, there's so many variables today, construction costs. I'll just tell you that in two-day period, we got a price increase on our lumber and trusses that was ten thousand dollars for our smallest house. So if you consider that we won't be building this for probably a year, I'm hesitant to say exactly. But our goal is to be right at around three hundred for a smallest and then moving up. Square footage, probably somewhere between, I'm sorry, somewhere between a thousand and sixteen hundred square feet. I'll just tell you that, you know, it, it's been what we've done in our whole history, and it's based upon my dad's, you know, way of thinking that we've always been less than our competition by quite a bit. Built by a family, so we believe the quality is better. In fact, I'm on the job site every day, walking around, available. I give my phone number out every time I'm up here. And so if you look today, some of the houses that are, that are resales are selling for thirty and forty thousand dollars more than our new construction. And so we're confident that we can do better, be less expensive, be better quality than any of the competition, while trying to maintain, you know, family units where people can stay instead of having to move out.
So what would the percentage be of the entire build-out that would be at your lowest cost?
I have no idea.
Okay. You haven't gotten that far.
Yeah, I have no idea.
Okay. So, okay. Well, that kinda narrows it down, because now we know a few facts. Would it, if, if it made the people of Cold Springs that have signed in to speak and, and came as an appellant or helped to an appellant or whatever, if, if everybody would agree that if it were two stories, that it would fit better out there? Is there a possibility you could make it two-story?
Just to be frank, we're talking about that now, but I sure don't wanna take anything off the table because the design process has just started. And it's, it's actually very difficult to try and get the square footage you need for the price range, limiting yourself. But I, I believe we're all trying to work towards a single and two stories. However, I don't wanna promise here and now.
So that you've got more processes to go through before this is all said and done. I know that. That, that pretty well answers a lot of my questions. Working with the traffic issue is probably gonna be a, a major thing, I imagine. There's a lot of complaints about some of the things like being, being so close to the road and, and that sort of thing, so.
Well, listening to the issues that the appellants have, I'd like to meet with them. I turned around. I, I think you guys are for that. And we can sure talk about some of these issues and maybe come up with some solutions that, you know, help a little bit, at least, some of these, some of these concerns.
And you promised you'll work with them, I know.
Absolutely.
Because you always have.
Well, and my number is seven seven five eight one three zero zero four six. Anybody can call me anytime. And I'll make sure that we offer to get, get together with these gentlemen and see if we can make something a little better.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Herman. Any further questions? You know, I, I want, as, in this process, this quasi-judicial process that every so often we have to go through, these are, these are difficult decisions to make. However, you know, I, in my comments, I, I look at Mr. Schoff's appeal, and I go through a number of the questions and concerns that he has in regards to infrastructure, safety, and, and traffic, and density, and fire, a number of, of these that I think have been addressed. Obviously, you, you're saying it's not congruent with existing homes that are mostly owner-occupied. And Mr. Schoff, you live on Panda Bear Court, according to your appellant information. And you, not necessarily back up, I don't know if they would be specifically congruent, but I think that's a, that's a definition that has some challenges with it. I know in South Meadows, there are the Dorado Homes, which are the attached homes off of Rio Wrangler, which I used to live in that area, right next to Lennar, and, and a number of those homes that were built there, that are attached two-story and three-story units in there, and they're single-family residents. And realistically, as you're driving down Rio Wrangler, you can't really tell the difference between a DiLoretto home on one side and the Dorado on the other, and then a Lennar that's right next to it. Yes, the height is there. You can see the height, but you can't tell that they're more than a two-story home. They just look like attached two-story homes. Cost-wise, I would say, for example, if you look at Fallen Leaf condominiums in, up in, off of Mount Rose Highway, off of Wedge Parkway, when those were built, and those were built in the early two thousands, two thousand and five, two thousand and six, also, which I owned one of, I purchased that unit, which was a fourteen-hundred-square-foot unit, for three hundred and two thousand dollars. So at that time, three hundred and two thousand for fourteen-hundred square feet was a condominium unit, which was three stories, one-story, two-bedroom, with two-car parking. That was pre the inflation of those prices. I, I think they jumped up to almost to three hundred and forty for those units at, at the time. But, you know, I think we continue to talk about workforce housing, and unfortunately, we are, we are victims of our own success here in northern Nevada, that we have a continued group of individuals that moved to our area. Now, does that say that we should stop building? No. That's not, that's not the, that's not the understanding that I've ever had. We've placed D.R. Horton, the attached homes, the D.R. Horton Homes off of Zalesi. And, and in the district, we put sixty units down off of Zalesi, and, and that's a, those were very significant units. And they're two stories as well. So I think what the listeners are... So I think what the listeners have tried to do here from lifestyle homes, in my opinion, is highly functional and does work within a number of the issues. And, you know, I respect Mr. Schoff's concerns. And hopefully, the Lifestyle Homes family and Mr. Schoff can address some of those concerns that he's brought up in his appeal. However, I don't see true issues because, as I read the Trekkie Meadows Fire Protection District Report by Chief Ray, Chief Way, I don't see the issues that are pointed out in regards to the fire. I fail to see the issues brought up, brought forward in Mr. Silegi's traffic study. Now, that could be, obviously, that is up for review and can, not review, but it can be contemplated differently depending on how, ever. But at this point, you know, RTC doesn't see any issues with the area. So, from my standpoint, I see the concerns, and obviously, this is his opportunity to voice those concerns. However, though, I do not see the actual harm and challenges that he brings up in his appeal, in this project. And as we continue to point towards that, not workforce housing and provide housing within this community, these are the ways we're going to have to do it. And it's not, they're not always the most appealing and fun to have to address. However, I think there's smart ways of doing it. This is a smart way of doing it. We all, in each one of our districts, have had this type of housing going in recent years. And so, mine is just as frequent as last year. So, with that, I have no further questions. Those are my comments. I will be supporting this project and, you know, in my opinion, not reversing the appeal, from my standpoint, based upon my comments. So, those are my comments for today. Anything further, Mr. Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I think it's important to note here that the Planning Commission approved this. And I know Commissioner Jung thought that they had not, forgive me, Commissioner Jung, I don't mean to, I'm not trying to call you out by any stretch of the mile. So, the Planning Commission approved this, and prior to that, the Citizens Advisory Board approved it. And they're, you know, going back a number of years to my days on the Citizens Advisory Board, it was always the desire of the developer to get the approval of the Citizens Advisory Board. Because if you could get the Citizens Advisory Board, nine out of ten times, the Planning Commission would follow suit. And that's what we have here. So, I agree with you, Mr. Chair. And, Mr. Listeners, I won't hold you to any numbers because I know, I went to fill my car up yesterday and it's three oh five a gallon, where just the last time I filled up was two eighty-seven. And that was just, it seems like that was a few weeks ago. My goodness. So the cost of everything is rising because of that. So I, and I know, I know that transportation for everything is going to drive the cost of everything up. Doesn't matter whether it's food or building materials. So, I know you guys will build a reasonable product in terms of the pricing. I know that you'll be fair with that. But the other thing that I would point out to the board is, if there was not a demand, the listeners or any other developer would not build. This is a, this is a supply and demand function. And sadly, we look at developers as if they're, you know, doing something wrong, but they're responding to a market condition, plain, pure, and simple. I guarantee you, if people weren't buying houses, they wouldn't build them. Or they'd be building a lot fewer, and a lot fewer of this type of product. And we're seeing it go up in Spanish Springs, not in the incorporated area, but in the City of Sparks. The same type of product is going up there. So, I feel the same, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Hill, I rescind it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also agree that, you know, the need for workforce housing is really important in our community. But also, you know, today, we're asked to find, to actually look to see that the following findings have been made for tentative map and as well as the special use permit. And I think that they have been made. And so, I would also vote to approve, or to affirm the Planning Commission's decision.
Great. All right. Seeing no further comment.
Commissioner, Chair, this is Julie Olander with Planning and Building.
Ms. Olander.
I just want to correct on the record. I want to clarify the ownership of these properties. The APN five-five-six, just to get this on the record, APN five-five-six-three-nine-zero-dash-fourteen is owned by WVC Commercial LLC and Parcel five-five-six-three-nine-zero-zero-four is owned by WVC Recreational LLC. So I just had to get that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Olander. And we'll call for the, what I'm going to do is I'm going to move forward. Now, we've had public comment, we've had comments from both the appellants and staff. This time, I'm looking for a motion.
So, Mr. Chair, I'll, let's see. Trying to figure out. I move to deny the Schoff appeal and affirm the decision of the Planning Commission to approve the tentative map subdivision case number WTM twenty-dash-zero-zero-five Woodland Village and the special use permit case number WSUP twenty-dash-zero-zero-two-one Woodland Village. Yep. The affirmance is based on the ability to make the findings required by WCC Sections one-ten-six-zero-eight-point-two-five and one-ten dot eight-ten-point-three-zero findings.
All right. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second, I have a motion and a second from Commissioner Herman.
Mr. Chair, if I could?
Yes. Mr. Watzviall.
Thank you. One of the issues that was presented to the board was the issue of standing. As presented, the motion doesn't address the issue of standing and would likely be construed in the future as a conclusion that Mr. Schoff did have standing and that the decision went forward on the merits. So, if the Commissioner would like to, he can leave the motion as it is or he can make a change to address standing specifically.
Mr. Watzviall, what would, in terms of standing, do we dismiss the, do we dismiss both of the appeals for lack of standing? Or one, just, okay, so we'll just dismiss the homeowner's appeal for lack of standing as part of the motion? Correct?
You can do it that way. Correct. You can say that you're...
What'll, so, Mr. Watzviall, I'll rephrase this. What will make you happy legally?
It's ultimately not my decision. The decisions that you have, the decisions that have been presented in the staff report include the ability to find that there is standing or there was not standing. And one of the options is that even if there isn't standing, the board could still find that even if there were standing, that the board would deny the appeal and affirm the decision of the Planning Commission, which is the second half, which is what your motion is to start.
Okay. Okay. Is my motion modified sufficiently enough?
So as I understand your motion, the motion is that the appellant lacks standing, but that even if there were standing, the motion is to deny the Schoff appeal and affirm the decision of the Planning Commission.
Thank you for the clarification in language, Mr. Watzviall. That's the motion, Mr. Chair.
So your, now, motion is amended to state that the appellant lacks standing, but if there were standing, that the, you would move forward with the denial of the Schoff appeal. Is that correct?
Correct.
Second, do you agree with that?
I think I will agree with that, yes.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second, and the second agrees. Do I have, Commissioner Jung, yeah?
Commissioner Lucy.
What?
Commissioner Lucy, this is Jen Gustafson for the record.
Hey, Jen.
I would just clarify that you please talk about which appellant you're finding lacks standing because we do have two appellants here. I think Commissioner Hartung is referring to appellant WVC, the property owners.
Correct. Schoff. I'm butchering his name, I'm sure, but, correct.
Mr., Ms. Gustafson, is that what you were looking for?
Yes, if you're going to make a determination as to if one or both appellants lack standing, I'm simply requesting that you specify which appellant lacks standing. And if I'm reading the board correctly, it seems that Mr. Commissioner Hartung is indicating that he believes that the property owners, so WVC Commercial, is the appellant which lacks standing. And then he's also denying appellant Schoff's appeal and affirming the Planning Commission.
No, no, Ms. Gustafson, that's incorrect.
That's incorrect.
No.
Okay, so, what the, this is the way the motion was phrased and formatted. The format is that the, Mr. Schoff, which is Derek Schoff, who lives at, in Panda Bear Court, lacks standing for the appeal. Not the WVC, the property owner, but the individual outside that is not within, that is not being inflicted by this. That appellant lacks standing, Derek Schoff. And if Mr. Schoff did have standing, that we would still move forward with the denial of Mr. Schoff's appeal and affirm the Planning Commission's decision to approve the tentative subdivision map. Is that correct, Mr. Vice Chair?
It is, yeah. That's, yeah, very, very well crafted, Mr. Chairman.
And then, second, Commissioner Herman, do you agree with that iteration of the motion?
So, we're denying the Schoff's appeal?
Correct.
Correct.
Based on lack of standing?
Based on findings, but if he, and that the board does not see that he has standing, but if he had standing, that we still would move forward with the denial of the appeal.
Right.
Do you agree with that?
I agree with that.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. We've heard public comment.
And then, Commissioner Lucy?
Yes.
I would just, I would just ask that you also do have to make a finding with regard to the second appeal. And in this case, you could make a finding that, given the motion, the property owner's appeal is dismissed as being moot.
Okay, and I'm, and so what we'll do is, based upon discussion with the appellant, the other appellant, which is WVC, they are withdrawing their appeal at this time for, is my understanding. Mr. Gordon, can I get you to put that on the record for me, please?
For the record, Garrett Gordon, yes, based on the pending motion, if that's voted in the affirmative, then we would indeed withdraw our appeal.
Thank you. All right. So now I have a motion and a second. The second appellant has withdrawn their appeal for this. I will call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously with all Commissioners voting. All right. Thank you very much, everybody. I am going to turn this over to the Vice Chairman. I have to go to a meeting at one PM that I'm already late for. Thank you.
Okay. What happened to the, Mr. Chairman? Mr. Solero, let me get to the proper page. And we are now on to item number seventeen, which is public comment. Mr. Solero.
That is correct, Mr. Vice Chair. Item number seventeen is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the Commission's agenda. See, this will be limited to three minutes per person and comments are to be made to the Commission as a whole.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call public comment for the final?
Yes. Here in chambers, we have Mr. Kenji Otto up first.
Mr. Otto. Welcome back, sir.
Oh, thank you again. So, actually, I want to comment regarding the issue on the traffic in Cold Springs. Again, I've been looking at this for over a decade. And this has been a good, brought, aired it a little bit and made it realistic. We have two roads going into Cold Springs that are dirt, but they're county roads. And they're, and one of them has a designation of a route. And it needs to be looked at for improvement and construction as a, as a route to get out of the valley. We also have an issue of emergency services, which I've brought up numerous times regarding the fact that in a drastic emergency, like a major fire or a snowstorm, there's kind of a problem there getting out of the valley, okay? And that problem is the fact that we only have one way out. Okay? And we have all these new people that don't know how to drive in the snow. And we have a problem with recklessness all over. I'd like to point out that the, what you just voted on, that area, it's designated as twenty-five miles an hour. Okay? In fact, all of the housing area is twenty-five miles an hour. So why there's wrecks is a question of integrity of the people who live there, okay? And I have had the same issue as Derek, where people passed me on double yellows and et cetera, et cetera, okay? I'm surprised there hasn't been more deaths. But, Mr. Hartung, I would love to talk to you about getting RTC to do something about that, if we can get somebody to do something about it. There's been, there may be somebody, a entity that is willing to volunteer some funds to the county to help with stop signs. We don't need speed bumps. We just need stop signs to slow people down. And this, this is a major issue. It's going to be a bigger issue. But Silver Nose Boulevard and North Virginia need to be paved. And regardless of what the people in the valley say, they need to be paved, bottom line. But they need to be done in a manner where it's not going to impact the people on Red Rock. And that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Next up, we have Mr. Blair Spieth in chambers.
Mr. Spieth. Mr. Spieth, would you like to speak for the final public comment, or are you okay?
Yeah, I'll say.
Okay. Please, please approach. Welcome back.
First of all, I want to say that all that legal talk scrambled my brain and I don't know if I'll be able to get through what I got to get through now. So, I just wanted to point out, when I was questioning the process, you know, of cab recommendation to Planning Commission recommendation to County Commission recommendation, that we don't have a member on the cab. So I wanted to point that out. And that I did find, you know, quite a few things in the Cold Springs area master plan that kind of don't agree with especially a three-story building out there, you know? It is mentioned over and over in the Cold Springs area plan, master plan, that the, you know, the ridge lines and everything like that are very important to the people that live there and the, and the character of the community itself, you know? So, I was thinking that, you know, the setbacks, being so close to the road, if they were even to be made a little, a little longer, you know, that would give you a better angle at seeing those ridge lines. Because every time I drive by that, the spot where the buildings are going to be, I think, I'm just not going to be able to see the mountains there anymore, you know? It is very important to all of us out there, you know, that we do retain those views and also, you know, that, that character of the community. Glad I'm not a lawyer, too. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have Mr. Derek Scheff.
Welcome back, sir. I apologize for butchering your name.
Chef liked to cook.
You may, you may call me Vogan.
I wanted to enter into the public record the application process I experienced on, experienced. On one-six, I emailed Julie Olander to inquire about how to appeal the one-five decision. Julie sent me the application and told me the fee was one thousand forty-three dollars and twelve cents. I started a GoFundMe account on one-ten, and in three days, we raised the money. Well, we, the people of Cold Springs, raised the money of one thousand forty-three dollars. On one-thirteen, I notified Julie that we had raised the money and that she told me where to drop off the application and where to put the fee. On one-fifteen, the last day to submit the application, at nine fifty-five AM, Julie Olander sent me an email saying she made a mistake. The fee was not one thousand forty-three dollars and twelve cents, that it was one thousand four hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventy-two cents, a difference of four hundred and five dollars and sixty cents. I was in shock. I felt like the goalpost was moved at the very... I felt like the goalpost was moved at the very last moment. I felt compelled to do what the people of Cold Springs wanted me to do, so I reached into my own pocket, and I made up the difference. I am asking the Board of Commissioners not to make me pay for Julie Olander's mistake and to refund me the $405.60. Thank you.
Next, next up on Zoom, we have Diana Smith.
Ms. Smith, can you hear us?
It's actually Berlin Smith, but a lot of people just cut off half my name. I just wanted to say that I felt through this whole process as an individual that never received notice, that it's been rushed through, and I do feel like I am agreed. What I didn't get out earlier was I did a poll of the appraisers, of other appraisers, so that I could say that this was unbiased, and of the 53 that responded, 70% said that in a stable market, single-family home, back in a busy road, which I now believe I will be back in a busy road, and is subject to road noise, would be considered a location is possibly adverse. Only less than 1% said that the location may remain neutral. I believe I am definitely an agreed person whose property value is going to be significantly changed possibly. It's going to take longer for, on the market, for my home to sell, once these homes are put in, and will take, I may have to do, you know, discounts. They, I am definitely, you know, saddened by this whole process, only within 500 feet when it's affecting the road behind me, and nobody addressed that. Nobody cared. So, thank you for listening, because that's all you're doing. Now, you can go on.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk.
We have Ann Marie Grant via Zoom.
Ms. Grant.
Ann Marie Grant for the record, sister of Thomas Purdy, murdered by Reno police, hogtied for 40-plus minutes during a mental health crisis, and then asphyxiated to death by Washoe County deputies. This past Saturday, March 6th, I attended an event in Boston and stood in solidarity with families here locally impacted by police violence. Families impacted by police violence across the country were calling for a nationwide protest this past weekend as jury selection begins in the trial of the cop who killed George Floyd, Derek Chauvin. Similar events were held across the country Saturday, including Las Vegas. Our demands are for the conviction of George Floyd's murder, a reopen all past cases of police brutality, abuse, murder, and cover-up. Prosecute, convict, and jail cops who abuse, murder, and cover-up. Prosecute, convict, and jail those in government, to include district attorneys who aid and abet police brutality. When I watched George Floyd being murdered, it immediately brought me back to my brother and how he died, a torturous death nearly five years before Mr. Floyd, and how so many after my brother had been asphyxiated to death by law enforcement, to include Justin Thompson and Nico Smith at the Washoe County Jail. I call for public comment, not only for my family, but for all impacted families across Nevada and the country. According to fatalencounters.org, 29,639 people have died during interactions with police since the year 2,395 in Nevada, 63 in your Washoe County. I want you to imagine the agonizing and terrifying death my brother Thomas experienced, hogtied for 40 minutes. Now imagine it was someone you love, your son, daughter, brother, parent. He even said to them, "Why did you have to do this to me? Why didn't you just charge me? You could have been a lot better people about this." And his crime was asking for help at a hotel he was a guest at, arrested for trespassing, tried, convicted, and executed by police. I choose not to be like those moralist officers, and I will continue to speak out, and I urge all of you to promote transparency and accountability and to follow your duties under NRS 211.020, which, once every three months, shall inquire into the security of the jail and treatment and condition of the prisoners. Go up and talk to the inmates. They are your constituents as well. They live in your county. Go talk to them, not just the man who, who runs the place, and will tell you whatever you want to hear. I'll leave you with my brother being murdered by the deputies at Washoe County Jail.
I have nobody else signed in.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will close public comment and bring it back to the board. Mr. Manager, that is, that leaves us with item number 18.
That's right, Mr. Vice Chair. Item number 18 is Commissioner County Manager's announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commission updates, requests for information on our topics for future agendas, and I have nothing this afternoon.
Okay. Thank you for that. Commissioners, I have no screen, so I can't tell if you would like to speak. So, I'll take, no, I'll take the raise of the hand. Do you, do you have something? Commissioner Hill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I forgot to mention earlier that I am co-hosting a statewide Nevada virtual job fair, and on March 25th, and actually, Washoe County is participating in this job fair, and job seekers can go to envycareercenter.org/joaffair2021. And then, I don't know if there's a way that, since Mr. Schoff was not given the correct fee amount, that we can talk to, we can work this out with the staff, or, you know, find a way to correct this concern, Mr. Manager? But it would be great if you could chat with him after the meeting to find a solution.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Herman? Can you turn your mic on?
I didn't have my son. I'm sorry.
There you go. Okay. Your comments?
That's all I had to say.
Okay. Commissioner Jung, do you have any comments before we adjourn?
Oh, thank you. Good meeting.
Okay, thank you. I will, I will leave us with this. Mr. Manager, would you, would you just open up just sort of a, an investigation? Talk to Ms. Olander. I don't know what's, what remedies are before us statutorily. You'll have to talk to legal. I, I'm not positive how this $405.60 amount can be dealt with, but perhaps you and myself and the chairman can have a conversation afterwards and, and just try to understand, and, and understand how we can not get into this issue with fees in the future, where we are quoting the correct numbers. Okay? Anything else, Commissioners? Okay, seeing none? Thank you, everyone, and we are adjourned.